Want to please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands firm, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have our translator available, Vivian Rodriguez.
Buenas tardes y bienvenidos de parte de la junta directiva del distrito escolar de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesita la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano. Gracias.
Gracias. And we have headsets available for those who may need hearing assistance as indicated on the slide. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, and recognitions. Dr. Sarvis.
Well, we do have two presentations tonight. The first is from La Colina Junior High School, and I'd like to introduce Assistant Principal Rachel Gonzalez-Harris. She's with us tonight to provide some La Colina highlights and to introduce Shannon Sala and the La Colina Choir who will perform for us this evening.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting us to the board meeting. One of the wonderful things that's going on at La Colina School is that we have a program called the Outburst Program, which is obviously a large group of students who are touring all up and down California. They go to many places here in Santa Barbara, and that is run by Mrs. Sala. We have also other programs at La Colina we're very proud of. We have band, we have drum line, we have chorus within the day, we have theater. So, Mrs. Sala will be happy to announce her theater in springtime. So, without further ado, I'd like to welcome Outburst, and I'm sure you'll enjoy the performance. Thanks for having us.
(Singing) Our cattle bells, sweet silver bells, songs you say broken away. Christmas is here, bringing a cheer to an old king in the hall. Ding dong, ding dong. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the ear. Oh, how the bells raise in the sound, go to the dead town in the town. Ring ring ring, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Ding dong, ding dong, that is the song. Ring ring ring, ring ring ring. Ding dong, ding dong. (Singing) Sweet silver bells, songs you say broken away. Christmas is here, bringing a cheer to an old king in the hall. Ding dong, ding dong. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the ear. Oh, how the bells raise in the sound, go to the dead town in the town. Ring ring ring, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Ding dong, ding dong, that is the song. Ring ring ring, ring ring ring. Ding dong, ding dong. (Singing) Sweet silver bells, songs you say broken away. Christmas is here, bringing a cheer to an old king in the hall. Ding dong, ding dong.
That was Carol of the Bells. That was Carol of the Bells, and now we're gonna sing a really silly song called "The Twelve Days After Christmas." It's kind of about what happens when things don't work out. The partridge in the pantry.
(Singing) The first day after Christmas, my true love and I had a fight. And so I chopped the pear tree down and burned it just for spice. And with a single cartridge, I shoved that blasted partridge. My true love, my true love, my true love gave to me. The second day after Christmas, I pulled on the old rubber gloves. And very gently rung the necks above the turtle chest. My true love, my true love, my true love gave to me. The third day after Christmas, my mother caught the groove. Had to use the three French hens to make some chicken soup. The four calling birds were a big mistake when the language was obscene. The five golden rings were completely pink and they turned my fingers green. The sixth day after Christmas, the six plain eastwood lay. I gave the whole darn gaggle to the ASBCA.
The American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals.
The seventh day, what a mess I found. All seven of the swimming swans had drowned. My true love, my true love, my true love gave to me. The eighth day after Christmas, before they could suspect, shh, I found the lovey. Eight paces of milk, nine tigers piping, ten ladies dancing, eleven lords a leading, twelve drummers drumming.
Well, actually, I kept one of the trivers.
And sent them back cold air. My true love, we had through love. There's so many words. For the morning Christmas gifts were for love. Four calling birds, three French hens, two turtle lovers, a partridge in a pear tree.
So, I'm glad that last night it still has some of these programs intact with the cuts that had to be made in the past couple years. So, this is Outburst. It's a show choir group that's auditioned out of a larger choir of 100 kids that meets 7:30 every day, zero period, or three days a week, and we have a concert on Thursday. Thanks for letting us see today.
And I want to thank the families who came to support their students because it wouldn't happen without the families. And I also want you to share with your students, they beat a hasty exit from the room, that they can see themselves at 5 o'clock on Saturday on Channel 18.
Okay, 5, Channel 18.
Channel 18 on Saturday. And please, thank them for coming. Thank you for coming, and thank you to the families. And thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Very good. We do have another presentation tonight. It gives me great pleasure to acknowledge the fine work of outgoing Board President Nancy Harder. Surprise. Nancy, would you like to come over, or shall I run these to you?
No.
Here we go. Let me dig these two out, and while you take a look at these, let me talk about you. When Nancy ran for Board of Education in 2000, a reporter asked what she would bring to the Board. Her answer was tremendous interest and passion. Well, she certainly exudes both. A longtime community volunteer, Nancy co-chaired the successful campaign to pass Measure V, a $67 million general obligation bond for our secondary schools. Since joining the Board, she has filled the role of President for three one-year terms. As a Board Member and Board President, she has embraced the Board Member's responsibility of guiding the district in areas of facility needs, implementing high standards of academic excellence, and focusing on improving educational opportunities for all students. Nancy, thank you for your service to the children of this community. Thank you for serving this last year as our Board President.
Always a pleasure.
I'll bring that. Here, you'll have to open these sometimes, so we'll see, so we can see what's in there.
It makes me feel like I'm going somewhere, and I'm not really going anywhere. Yeah, exactly. Somewhere down the table. Okay, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Sarvis at this point because we are on to our election of officers, our organizational meeting.
Good. Tonight is our annual organizational meeting. It's the point at which we elect new officers. Then we go on to the other agenda items on appointment of representatives, designation of authorized signatures, et cetera. But we start with the election of officers, and I will now entertain a motion for the election of, for nomination of President. Ms.-
I nominate Laura Malakoff as Board President for the-
Second.
Seconded by Annette Cordero. Is there discussion? The question has been called. All those in favor of Laura Malakoff as Board President for the upcoming year, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes 5-0. And with that, we will pass the gavel to Laura Malakoff. And, Mrs. Harder, you are going somewhere.
I am going somewhere.
Down to the camera, I think. Camera end of the dais.
I can move.
Well, actually, there isn't room yet. We have to decide who the Vice President is. And, Ms. Malakoff, I'll let you-
Do I hear a nomination for-
I'd like to nominate Ms. Parker for Vice President.
Second. All those, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None. We now have a new Vice President.
And who is the second on that one? Laura?
Oh, I'm sorry. It was Noel and Cordero? Park. Sorry. Harder and Noel.
Thank you.
Ms. Malakoff, I just have one funny piece of business. There's no footrest in that alcove. And if you want your footrest, I will bring you the one from here.
That's okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we have to have an appointment of a representative and an alternate to elect members of the Santa Barbara County Committee on School District Organization. I'm not sure what this involves, but-
This is the County Committee on School District Organization. So, if a homeowner comes to us and says we'd like to move our home to another district, or if, say, two districts want to combine, or more districts want to combine, or a district wants to split into separate districts, then this is the committee that's responsible for finding the people to make that judgment. So, this isn't the person who actually sits in judgment of that, but this is the committee authorized by the county to form the deciding committee.
Do, just to start, do we have a volunteer for this?
Well-
Go ahead.
I serve on this committee, so can I be our representative, or-
Excellent. Everybody, do we vote on this? Is that what we do?
Yes, we do vote on this.
Okay, but then I'd be happy to volunteer to be our rep.
Do I hear a motion, I guess?
Move to have Annette Cordero serve again as the representative to, do we have to go ahead and have the alternate as part of the same motion?
Sure. Do we have a volunteer for alternate?
For an alternate? Sure, I'll be the alternate.
Annette Cordero as the representative, and Nancy Harder as the alternate.
I'll second.
So, Parker and Harder, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. So, it's 5-0. Now, we have to designate a secretary clerk, an assistant secretary clerk?
I move that Dr. Sarvis be the clerk. Secretary clerk.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None. So, that was Harder-Cordero. And, do we have to now have an assistant secretary clerk?
Yes, and that is traditionally the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, but I would like that designation placed.
So, you can be both?
I'm sorry, you-
Oh.
You want it to be the, it is customary for it to be the Assistant Secretary of Business Services?
Assistant Superintendent of-
I'm sorry.
You want that as an official nomination, is what you're saying?
Oh, oh, okay.
I will move that the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services serve as the Assistant Secretary Clerk to the Board.
Second.
Parker and then Harder. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None. 5-0. Now, we're on to designation of authorized signatures. We have a lot of these. So, it's Brian Sarvis and Shirley Corpus, right?
So moved.
Second.
So, Harder and Parker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None. 5-0. Now, we get to designate the time, the date and time of our regularly scheduled meetings. Just want to note, let's see, we have just one meeting in March, and one meeting only in July. That means that there are two, actually, two other times we could have had it in July. September, I just asked that the one, one of those meetings, because of the religious holiday, just start a little later. And then November, because of Veterans Day, that it be moved to the next Tuesday. And then only one meeting in December. We also have in here, we also have other meetings that are not the, that are the special meetings, which are the one with the City Council, there's one with gangs, there's a couple of other meetings we'll kind of-
And we'll designate that during the year as we decide-
Not with gangs, about gangs.
Move to accept the date and time of regularly scheduled meetings.
Second.
So, Harder and Cordero, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. 5-0. Okay, now we get to committee appointments. We have five different committees. Some people are already doing some work with some of these committees and may want to continue, so if anyone wants to put their name next to something-
I'd be interested in the Armory Committee if it's not already occupied.
Okay, I was doing it last time, so I'm, that's fine. I'm with me. Anyone else for anything else?
I'm happy to continue with Igavert's Research Center liaison.
Okay.
I'm happy to continue with the Education Foundation.
Okay.
And then I'm the designated for the other-
Two.
Two, and that's fine.
Okay. Oh, this worked out very well. Do I hear a motion for the-
Yeah, move to approve that all of those various positions be designated as volunteers have indicated. Second.
Harder and Parker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. It's 5-0. Okay, now we're returning to our regular session. We're done with our organizational meeting. And announcements of closed session, I would give that over to you to, if there's anything-
There's no action to report.
Okay. Do I hear a motion about donations?
Move to accept with appreciation. Second.
Harder and Parker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. There's some big ones here, over 10,000, several over 10,000 or around there. Superintendent's report.
Well, I'd like to compliment you. You're well ahead of schedule tonight. Great job. Yes, we do have a couple of items to report on tonight. This is our last week of school before winter break. The secondary schools, secondary schools being our junior highs and high schools, will resume instruction on Wednesday, January 2nd. And our elementary schools will resume instruction the following Monday on January 7th. Superintendent's report. My office regularly issues a report to the Board called the Board Brief. This is a collection of reports and articles on school and district matters. A copy is available in the reception area or can be obtained through my office. The November 30 Board Brief included a number of items. I'd like to highlight just two of them. One was the professional development in the district's elementary district for the 2006-07 school year, and I will give you further information on that in regards to the district emphasis. You saw a lot of individual site activities, quite a list of site activities. And the second is an update on youth violence issues and prevention programs implemented by Parks and Recreation and the Santa Barbara Police Department, a report that was given to the City Council just recently. That, that report is important because I think it further informs our ongoing discussion about prevention of gang violence, and we'll be taking that up again in January for a special workshop meeting. Coming up in the days ahead, and there are copies of this list on the dais and on the side table, we have a number of events. Santa Barbara High School's Performing Arts Department will hold a holiday concert tomorrow at 7:00 PM. Otto Lehman will host the event in his kilt, as the department is raising funds to perform a hair in Scotland next August. Galita Valley Junior High's beginning an advanced band concert will be held on 6:30, at 6:30 on Thursday. And La Colina Junior High Choir, which we were just privileged to hear, will be performing Thursday at 7:00 PM. Santa Barbara High School's Acapella Choir will be singing in the lobby of Fest Parker's Doubletree Hotel Friday at 7 o'clock. And this is a free event to the public. And Dos Pueblos High School's Jazz Choir and Combo will perform holiday favorites and swing vocal jazz at the Camino Real Marketplace Saturday, December 6th, and Thursday, December 20th at noon, 12 noon. Both shows are free to the community. Well, details on these events are located on the district's website, on our homepage, and on the news section of the district's website. And of course, we wish everyone a happy winter holiday. Yes.
Dr. Sarvis, I think this, this document says that it's Sunday, December 16th?
You're right.
And Thursday, December 20th?
I have that on this document, yes. Sunday, December 16th. Thank you. That's the Dos Pueblos High School's Jazz Choir and Combo on Sunday, December 16th, and on Thursday, December 20th, 12 noon. Thank you. Yes.
Okay, correspondence. Oh, no, sorry, student report. Do we have a student today? I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Well, I'm happy to say that we do have a student report, I believe, from San Marcos.
Yeah, I'm Katie Shara. I'm the sophomore president, and we actually have a lot to report on.
Great. Katie, why don't you adjust that microphone, so, there you go. Thank you.
All right. First of all, we are very pleased with our API score results that we just got back. We improved to 754, which is a 21-point improvement over last year. And we're very proud, and we've started on formulating an incentive program for next year's testing in hopes of increasing our scores even more. Our goal for next year is 775. We have other plans for positive reinforcement, including a positive referral program where the teachers would be able to pick out students that are doing well, and they'd get a notification at home of their good ethics or work, just anything good that they've been doing. And we are actually reestablishing our Renaissance program, which, and that rewards students for grade point average improvement, and leadership, the leadership classes enlisting the help of local businesses to provide discounts at their stores for those students that did improve. Also, 21 of our students were recognized in the National Merit Program. Five of those were recognized in the Spanish program. 10 of them were commended students, and six of those students were the National Merit semifinalists. And the improvement in test scores and the National Merit Scholars is really seen in our school, school spirit, which has been increasing. Every Friday, we've kind of dubbed Wear Red Day, and that's really fun. It's neat to see all the students who participate. And also, this past October was our annual homecoming dance, and our theme was 50 Years of Royalty, because this is our, we're celebrating our first year of our 50th anniversary. And this was actually our largest dance in school history. We had 1,100 students come, and that was at Earl Warren. And our next dance is going to be a winter semi-formal at UCSB on February 9th. Our Performing Arts Department has been doing a lot lately. Last month, we held a fall play called Light Up the Sky, and that was a big success. Mr. Holmes is in charge of the Theater Department, and he continues to do a really good job with the students and putting on fantastic shows. And if you missed this, we have upcoming one-act plays, which are just short plays, and that starts January 9th and it goes through the 12th. These are performed in a small setting, and the audience gets to have a more intimate experience with the actors as they perform. Also, our English Language Learners Program did a production of Kurt Vonnegut's Who Am I? And that played to a packed house every night last week. And Mr. Levian was in charge of that, and he deserves a lot of praise for his work. Last night was the San Marcos Vocal Department's annual holiday concert at the San Roque Church, and the Vocal Department also performed at Disneyland's Candlelight Choir on December 1st. And the San Marcos students comprised, they were 10% of a 600-piece choir. And we were selected from all, all the schools in Southern California. The Vocal Department is currently raising funds for the traveling they're going to be doing soon. They, the group Madrigals is the only vocal group west of the Mississippi River who will be performing at Carnegie Hall in the National Choral Festival this March. And Enchante, which is our all-female vocal group, is going to be performing at the Heritage International Festival in March also. Our marching band was recently named state champions in their division, and I don't know if you know this, but they're going to the Orange Bowl in Miami this New Year's, New Year's Day. So, that's, we're really excited for them. And this past month, San Marcos students, in particular the AP Economics class, has been working really hard with the, our annual Kids Helping Kids fundraiser. And this group raises money for the Unity Shop, and it's just been a huge thing at our school. Everyone's getting really excited and really participated. And the Unity Shop estimates that Kids Helping Kids is responsible for just about 15% of the fundraising, of their fundraising efforts. And part of this fundraiser is the Penny Drive, and that's where the students in the Leadership Class go around to the local, the elementary schools and the junior highs to collect spare change and money, and that all goes to the Unity Shop. Some of the schools that have done particularly well is our La Colina Junior High School. We just found out that they have over $3,800 raised so far. And also McKinley School raised just about $1,000 to donate. The Penny Drive ends on Thursday, and we are estimating right now at about $10,000. So, that's really exciting for us. And like I said, all that money goes straight to the Unity Shop. And this money is going to be combined with the Kids Helping Kids banquet, which is actually going on right now. And that's at the Fest Parker Doubletree. It's a gala event with 500 people purchasing dinners and another couple hundred coming just for the musical performance, which will be the singer Tyrone Wells. And there's going to be a silent auction as well as a live auction, and there's some really cool items in there. And the, we have an early estimate of about $75,000 total combined with the gala and the Penny Drive. And our goal is $100,000, but that depends on the, what we bring in from the auction. And this will be in addition to, or this will all be presented in a check on the, at the Unity Shop telethon this Saturday. And students from our school are also going to be volunteering and answering the phones during that. And that's about it.
Thank you. That was very thorough. There are so many things going on. Did you say over 1,000 people, students at the dance? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, that's a lot of kids.
Yeah, it was really fun.
That's great.
That makes the Earl Warren Showgrounds an particularly important venue, because I think it's the only one that's large enough to house that many.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Feel free to, you don't have to stay here tonight, you can, with our vast audience here.
Board members, if we finish quickly, we could get down to the function tonight at the Doubletree.
We'll try. Correspondence, does anyone have any correspondence they'd like to share? Public comments, do we have any public comments? Was there anything? No? And so we're on to the consent agenda. I just want to mention that there is a F-12. The agenda and the item inside is corrected over here on the counter. Do I hear any motion for the?
I'd like to pull item F-3, but I want to note that there's no place on the agenda to discuss it except within this comment. It's, it wasn't added to the agenda. It was an oversight for, for the end of the meeting, so I guess we have to take care of it now.
Okay.
And also with regard to the minutes, I wasn't present at the October 23rd meeting, so if we could pull that one out from the rest of the minutes.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'll move to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Was there anyone else?
Second.
Thank you. Harder and Cordero. Was there anyone else, any other items to be pulled? No, then, so it's been moved that we approve all but F-3 and one of the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So it's 5-0. And let's do F-3 first.
I just wanted to, to comment, we had materials connected to it that specify what happens when students, in this particular example, it happens to be students going to Ashland, Oregon, to the Shakespeare Festival, but it could be any high school group traveling. I wanted to see, or I was curious to see what the contracts look like. And what I would request, Mr. Turnbull or Dr. Sarvis, I would actually like to see something specified even more completely, that all the rules that apply during the school day and all of the consequences to infractions during the school day also apply to field trips. And it's not spelled out quite that explicitly, although it comes close. So I'm wondering if in the future we could connect, it says, under miscellaneous information, students who have been suspended, well, that's not really the piece I'm, ah, school sponsor trip. It says appropriate school behavior will be expected, and I guess I'd like to add a sentence making that even more explicit.
Well, actually, what we could do is just simply, there's a, there's a subset of the Education Code 48900, not 48900, I can't remember what it is.
Whatever the number is.
But there is a subset of the Education Code that, that simply says exactly what you're saying, on the way to, during, and on the way from any school event, no matter where you are in the world, school rules do apply. And so we can simply have a copy of that embedded in any particular.
Thank you. That's exactly what I'm looking for.
That's fine.
Okay, so I'll move to approve item F-3.
Second.
Harder and Cordero, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. 5-0. Okay, then we go back to the minutes, and it's the minutes of?
October 23rd.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Cordero and Parker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So it's four, yeah, four, and then one abstention. Harder. Okay, then we're on to, oops. Our action agenda. G1, a public hearing on intent to convey an approval of grant of easement to Southern California Edison and Monroe Elementary School. This is our second time, but our first public hearing. And I don't see Mr. Young today.
No, the agenda item is the, the same agenda item that you reviewed before, so we're asking for your action on this tonight.
Actually, we approved the grant.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's the hearing first.
Did we approve the grant of easement? This is just the hearing, yeah?
Yes.
And then, then you have so many days that must, you know, transpire, and then you actually do the dedication, so that's what this is.
So this is just the hearing for hearing purposes?
No, this is when we actually convey the easement, isn't it?
The actual intent to convey.
Also, I want to note that it says 8 o'clock time certain. Are we too far away from that, or?
We need to skip it and come back to it.
So let's skip it and come back to it while we think about it. Same thing with G2. Let's go on to G3, and we'll come back to those.
Shirley, would you please catch Chris Robertson, who's about to present this item, but she doesn't know it, she's, she's walking out the back door.
While, while we're waiting, there's one typo, and it's the bold in the third paragraph down of the administrative regs. And it says volunteers not directly supervised, supervised as?
Supervisited.
Sorry, we've moved things around a little bit, so we're.
We're on the third reading and approval of Board Policy 1240, Volunteer Assistance. We've had previous discussion, we had this on a previous action item, and there was still discussion. I mean, this is, this is a tough one to deliver when you've got TB testing and you've got fingerprinting, and you have ed code sections that require that. So with that, we believe we have language in place, and if you'd like to give us further direction, that would be just fine, but I'm going to ask Chris Robertson, who's our Director of Personnel Services, to present this.
Please excuse me for leaving the room just as this was happening. I happen to be the keeper of the keys for the lock when she needs to put the equipment away, so, that's what I have to do, so sorry. Background on this is that Robin and Elaine have been doing a lot of work towards putting this together and working with other district information and looking at all different kinds of policies and things that would help us be able to implement a volunteer program that would make it a little easier for our volunteers to be able to be on campus. So in terms of the language that we've been working through, this is the last revision that I am aware of, that we want to present to you tonight, because we, we think that it captures something that will be really, will work well for us. And I know there may still be a couple of questions, and I'm here to be able to answer what I can on that, and more happy to entertain anything else that you might need for me to, to get or do.
Excuse me if I don't remember exactly the answer. I think we, we talked about this, but I don't remember exactly, was how much, I mean, this is all pretty expensive to ask parents to do this, so are, we are planning to somehow fundraise or something to pay for this? Is that the idea?
Well, it's my understanding that Robin was looking at the, the sites as being able to, they want to have the volunteers, then they have certain funds and things that they could put aside to be able to pay for some things like that. There has been no other discussion with me that I'm aware of any other kinds of funds to cover that. But site funds in terms of some volunteers and if the fingerprint route needs to be, to go to, that is the more expensive of the.
So how much, do you have any clue as to how much a TB test or the?
I don't have a, if, if they go get it from their own personal doctor, now if they have insurance or it's covered, I don't know, it could vary. The fingerprints also can, can vary depending upon the organization that you go to, to have them done. It could be anywhere between $40 and $65, $70 to have them done.
Wow.
And they're only able to be done for our agency. They can't use our fingerprints that they do for us anywhere else in any of the other districts surrounding us, and this is partly of the Department of Justice rule, not our rule.
Ms. Malacca?
Yeah, sorry, go ahead and, Harder.
There's a mobile service that does it for like $23 to $25 per set of fingerprints. And I can get that information, but I suppose if schools organized the day that they were going to do it, it would be much less expensive.
Yes, she'll do it for that, that amount. She doesn't do that individually for that amount, but she will give a discounted rate for a larger number, a group of people that she can go and do. It's Lori's Mobile in town, and she is just pretty much the last year or so has come into business on this, and it's been really good, because we've been able to move people faster through the process by having her readily available.
Ms. Parker?
When Ms. Alvarado presented this information to the Elementary Parent Advisory Committee, she stated at the time that the district would be paying for the TB testing. And so I don't know if that's true or not.
I do not know that the district would. The only thing that we have talked about was the fact that the sites would probably be using their site funds, whether it's a lot of your other kinds of funds, to be able to cover some of that should the need arise. If there's going to be any further discussion about district covering it, I, I'm sorry, I'm not aware of that.
Okay. My concern was with the, the part about the TB testing, because it's, as it stands, the way the language is written, this has all volunteers being TB tested, and that includes volunteers that are only coming into a classroom there for one time a year. The, at the end, it says the superintendent or designee may exempt from TB requirement, testing requirements those volunteers who serve less than a school year and whose functions do not require frequent or prolonged contact with students. But since all volunteers, I don't know of any volunteers that work from the first day of school to the last day of school, that would then put all volunteers in the category of they don't need to be tested possibly, if we brought the superintendent in. And so I had asked if we could get some information from the district nurses on what, if there were parameters, something beyond, you know, maybe more than once a year before you need to get TB tested, that kind of thing. And I don't know if Ms. Alvarado or Ms. Sowaski were, were able to get that information.
Well, I do know that Cassandra was supposed to be here tonight, she had a family emergency, and so she was not able to get us an answer to that, or be present tonight to, to respond to that.
May I suggest that since, since Ms. Alvarado was a major part of this discussion, since Robin Sowaski was a major part of this discussion, and since we had a nurse who apparently was going to be part of it, that we just table this item and bring it back to our next meeting.
What I do know is I think, in terms of the language that you're looking at there, the, the superintendent would have some discretion in regard to this situation. The other thing we, you know, would need to be able to answer is, is this would really put the onus on the site administrators to make sure that their volunteers are supervised by their staff and never left alone.
Right.
And that would be certainly the easiest criteria for us to be able to follow and to move, be able to get a lot of volunteers on our campus and do that.
And that works well for the fingerprinting, but the TB testing is still an issue. I think we need to clarify, I mean, at what point is it such a risk? Is it, you know, if they're serving more than one hour a week? Is it, you know, five hours a month? I, I don't know, and I really feel like we need some parameters on that.
Even looking in ed code, there's no parameters that way, except that's every four years.
Ed code says anybody less than a year, and ed code also refers to employees, not to volunteers.
Right, it's employees only.
It, it, I mean, I feel like we should be doing it from a practical health standpoint. What's the safest for our students?
And I've gone through, I brought several of the ed code stipulations in that sort of support each other on that. The safest thing is you, you make them, make sure they're clear for a TB test, because you really do have to consider our students first. And unfortunately, there have been a few active cases in the county. And so, you know, we want you to be very careful of that. In a lot of situations, parents who work or have worked for other agencies, et cetera, and may have time to volunteer, usually have to have a TB test for some of the other organizations they work for, every four years. And it's, it's a common good thing to have your own doctor would recommend that, you know, you should do that. But for those that don't, we would need to look at what would be the best vehicle to do this, and is there going to be something they can hand us that's going to be, make it okay for them to be there? Because we're not medical people. And I don't know that just turning in a piece of paper that says, yeah, I'm, I'm healthy or not, they still may need to go to their doctor and say, you know, can you write a note for me saying, you know, everything looks good, my records are good, I'm healthy, whatever? I mean, there could be something maybe along that lines we do. It does put the onus on them to show us proof of some sort, whether it's a doctor's note or an actual TB test, which we will honor up to four years, so.
I, I still feel like we need more information, and I also, I, I'm not sure if my fellow board members are aware that we have had this issue come up at elementary schools where parents from Latin American countries are usually vaccinated against TB, and therefore they pull up a false positive on the TB test.
Right.
Then they have to be, go to a chest X-ray, which is much more expensive, and also, of course, takes more time. But there are, that's a significant percentage of our elementary parent population. And I think that's something that needs to be looked at too, in terms of what's safest for our kids without being too high of a barrier. So I would really like to continue this discussion with Cassandra Ornalis here.
Well, in fact, oh, I'm sorry.
I found out too late about Cassandra. I didn't know until just before I came in here that she had a family emergency, so.
Yes. Well, in fact, since this is an administrative regulation, and administrative regulation doesn't really need board approval, the board policy should, but, but I think it's very important that this AR be very clear. And it says on the one hand that everyone has to have a TB test, then it says the superintendent may, may waive this for anyone who isn't volunteering the entire year. And frankly, I don't think that provides the clarity that I think we need to our sites. So I'd like to take it back.
Any, any other comments before we move on? Only that it looks like there should be a new paragraph in the middle of this 1, 2, 3 paragraph, to start with volunteers under the direct, those, that's a different subject than the first part, so maybe that could be a different paragraph. Did I say that right? The third paragraph down, right in the middle, where it says volunteers, start that as a new paragraph, because that's about the testing, whereas the other part is defining. Okay, we'll move on. Thank you.
More specifically, if I could have you maybe, Kate, talk to me a little bit more about that, because I will work with Elaine and Robin on this to try to see if there is something more that could be done that would be acceptable to us.
Yeah, and actually, I have one more thing that I would like to say, and that is, most districts, most large districts, have a, some sort of volunteer information form or background form that they have volunteers fill out. And I think that that would be smart for us to do as well, in terms of having, it's not specified, it says that there's going to be some sort of training for volunteers, but I think that, that we should be asking this information directly of parents, and sometimes it can be hard for teachers on site to have that conversation, are you a registered sex offender? And it would just be, it would be much better for us to ask that in a, in a district form.
Well, we do have a form that we use for volunteers when we sign them up, and so there, we can pull that and make that available to, as well, to look at. But we do gather information on them, specifically a background, address, phone number, contacts, what have they done before, what, what have, else have they participated in schools, things like that. So I can look over a little bit more and, and bring it to your attention and show you what it, it says and what it does. Maybe that needs some revamping then too, as a part of this.
Okay, thank you. Rather than, still we have time here, so let's do G4.
In case 0708-08, move to appro, move to approve the stipulated agreement. Second.
Harder and Parker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, so it's 5-0.
And 0708-28, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
Harder and Parker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, 5-0.
And 0708-03, move to approve the stipulated agreement.
Can that be with the removal of the second sentence of section number eight on page two?
Yeah.
Did I hear a second?
Yes, yeah, from Dr. Noel.
I accept the change. With removal of what?
It was essentially a typo. It can be pointed out.
So Harder and Noel, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No.
And 0708-23, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
Harder and Noel, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, 5-0.
And 0708-22, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
Harder and Parker, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And do I hear anybody opposed?
And 0708-14, move to suspend the expulsion and the student to attend Community Day School on, with the stipulation that it's a last chance agreement. Does that make sense? Okay.
Harder and, do I hear a second?
Second.
Cordero, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
So 3-2, it passes. The noes are Noel and Parker.
May I ask for a clarification? For what length? A, one semester, the remainder of the school year?
The student is in eighth grade, correct?
Correct.
So for the remainder of the school year and for the summer, assuming summer school is in there.
Thank you.
So the same time on here is August 2008?
Thank you.
So now, we can, let's say 5 of, we could go back to, I think we're, are we close enough? To go back to, where are we, sorry? Yeah, G1, a public hearing on intent to convey an approval of grant abatement to the Southern California Edison at Monroe Elementary School.
I'm going to have Eric introduce this. I understood it to be a hearing and approval. And if we need to break it into two parts or agendize it for a future meeting, we should do so.
No, you're, you're okay. What happens is at the last board meeting, you adopted a resolution of intent, and then there's an interceding period where you have to advertise in a paper of general circulation, and then have the public hearing prior to the action to actually convey. So that's why the items are joined. I think the item is fairly self-explanatory. I think Dave did a good job. It's, you know, not a huge issue relative to being obtrusive or being an encumbrance on the district's property. So at this point, I think the public hearing probably needs to be opened, have your deliberation, and hopefully take action.
Well, I'll put a motion on the table. I'll move to approve the intent to convey and approve the grant abatement to Southern California Edison at Monroe, Monroe Elementary School.
Second.
So Harder and Cordero, do we have to open a public hearing or say something special, or no?
We should indicate that the time for public hearing had been opened, there being no public to be heard. We went forward with the item.
Just taking a, a leap from the county board's book, I think it's a good idea to open the hearing, and when we're done, close the hearing. So it's.
Well, I guess, okay, we've opened it? Do we have to close it before we, before we vote, or?
No, no.
Okay, all right. So do we have a, a motion with Harder and Cordero? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, so we have 5-0. Now we close the public hearing. And we can go on to G2, which is a public hearing and approval of resolution 0708 dash 14 regarding Williams' sufficiency and sufficiency of instructional materials for Santa Barbara High School District. Mr. Gonzalez.
And Mr. Gonzalez will give this presentation.
Thank you very much. We are obligated on an annual basis to review the instructional, the primary instructional materials used in our schools. You may recall, we did a similar presentation to the board on our elementary school. Tonight, we present the results of our junior highs and high schools. Just by way of background, for the junior highs, what we're required to do is to determine that in reading, language arts, English language development, mathematics, history, social science, science, foreign language, and health textbooks that are currently in use in our junior highs are state board of education approved. Second, we are also obligated to ensure that English, reading, language arts, mathematics, history, social science, science, health, foreign language textbooks used at the high schools are standards aligned and have been approved by you folks, our local governing board. In addition, we're obligated to make sure, to certify that there are sufficient science lab materials available for our students. Our review for the 2007, 2008 school year indicates that indeed we have met the requirements of the Instructional Materials Education Code and Williams' settlement. And we are recommending to the board that the, the resolution number 0708 dash 14, which is a resolution regarding the sufficiency of instructional materials for the junior highs and high schools be approved by the board.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if, I'll put a motion on the table. I don't know if there's going to be any discussion, but I'd like to move to approve resolution 0708 dash 14 regarding the sufficiency of instructional materials for Santa Barbara High School District.
Second.
Harder and Cordero?
Yes.
Yes, I, I want to, anytime I see something that says we are making an official certification or a resolution, I like to, I like to make sure that, that, that the superintendent is recommending this, not the staff.
Yes, I'm recommending this resolution. In fact, I've reviewed this. Is, is that what you're asking?
That's exactly what I'm asking. And particularly because, I under, if I, check me if I misunderstand this, but the state approves, the state board approves the textbook list for the junior highs, and not for the high schools. But we then are certifying that all of those books are aligned with the California content standard.
Correct.
You're, you're certifying that as well, sir. Thank you very much.
All right, we have a motion, Harder and Cordero, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, 5-0. Oh, my gosh. We're on to H1, the conference agenda, the first interim budget report. This is very exciting for us.
Well, we have with us tonight Eric Smith, who's our interim assistant superintendent for business services, and of course, we have Shirley Corpus, who's our director of fiscal services. Tonight is the first interim budget report on the current year budget. We had the, the budget approved at the end of June. This is our first interim, there were, there will be a second interim. Sometimes there's a third interim before we go to closing the budget. So with that, Eric Smith?
Ed code 42130 requires the district to submit two financial interim reports each year. The first one being a snapshot of revenues and expenditures from July 1st through October 31st to be presented to the board no later than December 15th. That's the first interim report. The second interim report is actually a snapshot of revenues and expenditures in the current year from July 1st through January 31st that has to be presented to the board no later than March 15th of that fiscal year. In both instances, the board's required to make a certification. And the certification is whether it's positive, qualified, or negative. A positive certification is that you can meet your current year and subsequent two-year obligations, meaning your fiscal obligations, and maintain a reserve level above the state recommended minimum reserve for both the current and subsequent two years. A qualified certification is you may not be able to meet your current and subsequent two-year fiscal obligations. And a negative certification is that you will definitely not be able to meet your current year and subsequent two-year fiscal obligations. So what I'd like to do, since this is an informational item, is walk you through our findings relative to the first interim report. And there's two things I'd like to point out. The interim report is a certification process, but also, as you look through the changes in the budget, you're also, or you will be on Thursday, basically taking an action to approve these changes as your new working budget until the second interim report. So that's a critical component, because you have to realize what you're officially doing is changing the budget from what you adopted in July, or I think you adopted in September. I'm not sure when you adopted. But in any event, your working budget becomes approved by the board until the next milestone, which is the second interim report. So if you could turn to this document here, what I'd like to do is first talk about the current year budget, and we'll talk about the general fund first, and then we'll basically look at the other funds, and then we'll talk about the multi-year projections. In this particular instance, you can see that we kind of did a super summary of the changes in all the funds on page two, which is we look at the annual budget that was adopted, and then we look at the changes between the annual budget and the first interim. And you can see some significant changes that'll be called out in further pages. But one of the things that's probably most significant is when you look at the general fund, you can see that there was a dramatic increase in the general fund from the adopted budget to the interim, $13,408,731. You can also see there's increases in some of the capital facilities funds, deferred maintenance fund, building fund, and also the county school facilities fund. So when you look at the subtotal of the $172 million over $149 million, a lot of that is attributed to capital facilities funds, which basically means there's projects that are budgeted to be expended. As we move down into the second part, which is the general revenues, transfers, and sources, you can see the differences in both the unrestricted and restricted revenues between the adopted budget and the first interim. And then on the following pages, you can see the same for the expenditure objects. Below that, we've broken out all the revenue sources by resource. And resource is a basically a four-digit account code structure contained in the SACS account code structure that basically breaks out all of our resources and identifies where there are changes. So what we tried to do is, on a resource-specific basis, show you changes between the adopted budget and the first interim report. If you move to page six, here, this is significant, because what we try and do here is show you the variances. And basically, the variances are critical, because they show you the significant changes from the adopted budget to the first interim. And what I've done is what we call the major, major object groupings in the 8,000s. It's the revenue limit sources, the federal revenue limit, federal revenue, rather, other state revenue and other local income. You can see in the revenue limit sources at the top of page six, there was a slight variance downward, because we had the amount of county operated, special ed, ADA overstated. In the federal revenue, there was basically variance there, because what you'll see is a swing up, because in most districts, including this district, you'll see that federal revenue isn't budgeted until entitlement letters for categoricals are normally receded, and then we budget, because we have an insurance that somehow we're actually getting the money. So usually, you will see federal revenues, which are restricted revenues, understated at the time of budget adoption, and then a swing up by first interim. Other state revenue, we have a similar circumstance. Local revenue, we had other variances. Part of it due to the fact that the issuance of the trans interest wasn't booked at the time of budget adoption. E-rate funding and the amount of $451,000 was not included. Funding for the Roosevelt and Franklin Arts programs, which were restored, were not included. And other miscellaneous local donations were not reflected. On the expenditure side, unrestricted certificated salaries have increased by $583,000, largely due to the restoration of the elementary district music program and junior high school electives. Unrestricted salaries in the classified arena were increased due to the restoration of a position in the research and evaluation department, and some coding corrections relative to the fact that some personnel were partially charged off to categoricals, and now they're fully funded on the unrestricted side of the budget. Employee benefits increased by $2 million. That's the fact that it was understated by $2 million at the time of budget adoption. Additionally, there's about another $500,000 relative to the $375 per FTE pickup that the district did relative to the employee's share of health and welfare increase. Unrestricted expenditures for books and supplies increased by $235,000. And that's really due to the fact that there was lottery carryover from last year that was not spent, or I should say lottery dollars that were not spent last year that were carryover to this year and are budgeted to be expended. And I'll talk about that relative to your large restricted ending balances, which something needs to be done about. Other operating expenses increased by $1.3 million, basically due to an accounting treatment. Part of what we did this year is that last year, E-rate was recognized as an abatement against expense. And what I mean by that is that if you had a credit on a utility or telecommunications, it was actually a credit or a deduct against expense, and that's how we recognized it, the accounting treatment. You're no longer treating it that way. Now you're treating it as revenue on the 8,000s, rather than like a credit against an expenditure object on the expenditure side. So, so what you're seeing is that you would have had a reduced expenditure last year. Now you won't see that, now you'll see it as income this year. So it's a change in accounting treatment, but it, it shows up as a significant variance. Also, we had the interest expense on the tax and revenue anticipation notes, because remember, when you borrow money, you not only just get interest, you actually pay the expense for borrowing that money. And the arbitrage, or the difference between the interest income and the expense, is how you make your money. Capital outlay had no significant variances, other outgo had no significant variances. As we move on to page eight, what we did here is kind of broke out a pie, a graphic representation of general fund unrestricted and restricted revenues. You can see that basically unrestricted constitutes about 67%. The other restricted, about 18%. Special ed, home to school, about 1%, or special ed about 14% and home to school about 1%. Then we started to get into ADA, which we'll talk about at great length when we get to the multi-year projections. But what we did here is basically look longitudinally retrospectively relative to what's happened, and then did some projections. And the projections are a combination of two different projection methodologies. In the elementary, we use the cohort survival method, because that seemed to make the most sense, and that is the industry standard. And we'll talk about that in greater detail in the multi-year. And in the high school, we looked at the number of sixth graders times a factor to contemplate what, what the seventh grade reality is. And then looked at the cohorts, kind of did a grade level progression, looked at what we thought the seventh, went to 12th grades, it dropped off. And as you'll see, that what we project is a significant decline is in the high school district, especially in 08, 09, a little bit less than 9, 10. And the elementary district looks pretty much stagnant. And it looks like it's actually growing a little bit and will probably stabilize. And we've done some more projections that when we come back and talk about the basic aid scenarios, you'll see when we run those out like seven or eight years, what it looks like. So on page nine, we talk a little bit about ADA and the amount per day that you lose when students don't show up in each district. Because remember, you're funded on the basis of actual attendance. There's no such thing as excused absences, absences anymore. And since you're a declining enrollment district in both districts, one of the critical concepts you need to understand is the prior year guarantee. The prior year guarantee means you're funded at P2 on the basis of the greater of current or prior year P2 ADA. P2 ADA is normally calculated in April, its seventh month attendance. So as long as you're in decline, that's one of the things you're going to live by, because your prior year is almost always going to be greater than your current year. Because if it's not, then you're starting to grow again. On page 10, there's a summary of lottery and what's happening with regard to lottery. We talked a little bit about that a few weeks ago. And then on page 11, we have a breakdown of general fund expenditures by category. That's combined, and so you can see that, you know, the greatest share is certificated. Non-management at 46%, management at 5%, classified non-managed at 14%, benefits at 16%, books and supplies 9%, operating expenses 10%. The other two don't make it quite to 1%. Then we break it out, just looking at unrestricted, is because we know there's a premium on unrestricted revenues. And you can see, it doesn't change much. Certificated non-management, 43%, management 4%, meaning that we got 1% of our management in restricted. Classified, 9%, benefits 20%, books and supplies 11%, operating expenses 13%. SACS allows us to track things by functions, and functions are different than resources. Resources basically identify the funding sources, and objects kind of identify the object or goal, kind of the, I think of objects as almost nouns. Functions are almost like verbs. And so we can break out things by function now, and this pie chart shows you a breakout of general fund expenditures by function at first interim. And the function codes are prescribed by the state through the standardized account code structure. As we move on to page 13, we look at general fund encroachments at first interim. An encroachment basically means that your unrestricted general fund has to make a contribution to to a restricted program or fund to make it balanced, to make it whole. Biggest encroachment you have in the general fund is special ed. Um, you know, it's generally a growing encroachment in most districts. As I said, an encroachment can be contained within a fund, or it can be a general fund contribution to a fund. And as you'll see, one of the things that we have to do here is that we have to increase the interfund transfer to the cafeteria fund, which is stated in the last paragraph on this page. So that's an interfund transfer to the cafeteria fund, and you can see that we had to increase it by a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars at first interim to make them whole, based on the projection of how we think they're going to end the year. So that's an interfund transfer between funds. Special ed is an encroachment within the fund. And then I also called out routine restricted maintenance account because you're required to basically set aside three percent of your total expenditures and other outgo and commit that to maintenance, um, basically in exchange for receiving funds from the state through the state school facilities program, and that's your guarantee that you're going to maintain those facilities at that level from, for twenty years from the last date of apportionment. So your second biggest encroachment within the dis, within the general fund is the routine restricted maintenance account. You have a very small transportation program relative to other districts. That would normally be the second big encroachment. As we look at our reserve for economic uncertainties, which is the ending balance, right now, we're at four point seven percent above the three percent minimum, but as we'll see in the multi-years, that will, uh, be exhausted quickly over the next subsequent two years. Then we looked at other funds at first interim. We don't look at the ending balances here. What we're really looking at is the net change between adopted budget and the first interim budget. And you can see in the net changes, most of them, most of the funds that have deficits, and if they're deficits of any size, they're capital, capital facilities type funds, and that's a normal thing you would see because you get money in and you burn it down. They're not ongoing operational funds. The funds are basically set up to basically, uh, complete a one-time task or a one-time goal, which is to build buildings or modernize buildings. So you're never going to have an ongoing or increasing excess of revenue over expense. You're always going to have a deficit there where you're burning down money. So as we walk through that, you can see that the child development fund has a small deficit. The cafeteria fund will balance, but it will only balance on the basis of the interfund transfer from this, from the general fund over to the cafeteria fund. Deferred maintenance, which is fund fourteen, has a deficit. Same with the building fund, capital facilities fund. State school building fund is basically obsolete. County school facilities fund receipts the new state school facilities dollars under the state school facilities program. It has a deficit. All those are basically burning down funds to basically, uh, achieve some kind of capital outlay or capital expense. Bond interest and redemption fund is really a fund that's basically monitored by the county usually. It basically services the debt on the GO bonds in terms of the taxes that are collected and how that works. Warehouse revolving fund, as you can see, there's no activity there. Self-insurance fund, we have a small deficit there. And you can see retirees' benefits fund, a small surplus, and that's really a fund that's kind of just a income in, expense out, that deals with, uh, the recordation of self-pay retirees in terms of them paying for their benefits and the expense, premium expense we pay to the carriers to basically afford that. The next part of the report is the multi-year projection, and as I said, during the interim report process, you have to certify that you can meet the current and subsequent two years. So in a multi-year forecast, a multi-year forecast is only as good as your assumptions. And the assumptions, who knows? I mean, this is our best bet, but in, in a month, because the state's budget, the governor's budget will be out, some of these assumptions will be obsolete. So that's why it's important you do multi-years, both at the first and second interim, and realize that this is a changing, evolving process. One of the things we're hearing is that we don't know what's going to happen with the COLA. Our multi-year projections have COLA in them. So we'll talk about that in a moment, but I just wanted to talk about the preamble, and this preamble you see on page twenty-eight is standard FICMAP boiler language, which is basically says, hey, multi-years, you know, because stakeholders need to understand that because of changing conditions relative to your student enrollment, economic conditions, they're only as good as the assumptions, and if the assumptions bear out, they're going to be right on target. So we'll talk about the science behind the assumptions, and then my recommendation would be is second interim, which in my mind is a more precise interim report period because, one, you're closer to, closer to the fiscal year end, and so basically, you should be able to identifi, identify where you're going to end up at year end because you're close. You have seven months under your belt rather than five or whatever the case may be. So the first thing we did is we looked at the revenues and what kind of inflationary factors we're going to adjust the revenues by. Industry standard is to use the school services financial DART board, and you can see that on page twenty-nine for oh-eight, oh-nine, and oh-nine, oh-ten, we basically adjusted the revenue limit by the statutory COLA. State categoricals, we basically adjusted by the COLA. Uh, we adjusted some things by the CPI, which we'll talk about in a moment, and we adjusted the lottery based on the lottery projections that are contained within the DART board. One of the things I wanted to talk to you about was underneath, you see the estimated statewide average base revenue limits for the current year, and one of the things I did is I added in both districts' current revenue limits, and you can see they're slightly under the statewide average. So what that shows you is that you're still low wealth relative to the average revenue limit, which relative to, to our discussions about basic aid, it takes you, you go, it takes you longer and you're not as wealthy. So like, if you hit base, if your revenue limit was above the statewide average and your AB increased to that point, you'd have more wealth faster, and so you're basically, when you get to basic aid, you're a poor basic aid for a while before you get deep into basic aid is the best way to look at it. So that's an important consideration relative to a future discussion, and I'll probably bring this table back when we talk about basic aid. So the methodology we used in the enrollment, in the elementary district was the cohort survival. And the cohort survival method basically looks at the likelihood that one grade-level cohort, let's say in kindergarten, will make it successfully intact to first grade in the subsequent year, or is it going to be less than a hundred percent, more than a hundred percent? And then it looks at those quotants over time, and then you extrapolate through the cohorts out into a future year, and it can be two, three, four, seven, eight, as much data as you want to use. In this particular case, I used four years of historical data, and then we basically used a birth rate correlation method to basically drive what the projected kindergarten enrollment would be. And so what we did there is we looked at the percentage of, uh, live births that became kindergartners in the elementary district five years later, and we played with it. We looked at the assumptions. One time, we looked at seven years, then six years, then three, then two, and when we looked at three and two-year averages, it was twelve percent. I mean, we were higher than that because you had some big birth years way, um, prior, and it drove up that percentage to thirteen or fourteen. But when we looked at the last couple of years and used the two or three-year average, came to twelve percent. So using what we have as real data in terms of live births in the subsequent years, and then extrapolating out to what we could project kindergartens would be, you can see that the kindergarten should be a little bit bigger than what we thought was going to be. So as that ripples through the enrollment projection, you'll see the elementary district basically goes up a little bit and then goes down. I mean, it's kind of stagnant. That's not what's happening in the high school district. In the high school district, when Brian and I started looking at the cohorts, we're seeing huge cohorts leaving and smaller ones coming up. So where you're taking the big ding is going to be in the high school district. Taking that first oh-eight, oh-nine is three point six percent, and about one percent the subsequent year. Now remember, that's important because when you take the three point six percent because of the prior year guarantee, you're not going to feel it until the following year. And when we look at this multi-year projection, you'll see that's where the rubber hits the road is in the second subsequent year because you basically got another, you know, you got a year reprieve because of the prior year guarantee. So as we move through the assumptions in the, uh, on the expenditure side, here's what we included. One point five percent step and call of movement, which is basically industry standard statewide average. We basically budgeted the three percent that was in the oh-eight, oh-nine that's already been settled. Um, then we looked at the one percent compaction. Then we basically had to budget something in nine-ten for a salary increase, and what was reasonable was two percent. We could leave something off, and you could come back and say, Eric, I don't like that assumption. We're going to give nothing in nine-ten, but my job is to make it as realistic as possible. So then what I did is for the classified salaries, with the exception of the salary compaction issue, I did a me-too. Employee benefits, you guys have a cap, but you don't enforce it here. So basically, industry standard for the last several years between eight and fifteen percent. I budgeted it eight percent. And I did some rough calculations just so you know what that amounts to. On the unrestricted side, between oh-eight, oh-nine, and nine-ten, it's five hundred thousand. So because it's just on the health and welfare benefit expense. So don't get confused as being a one percent on the total amount of expenditures. It's just on the health and welfare. Books and supplies and other operating expenses, we adjusted by the consumer price index, and that's on the DART board here on page twenty-nine. So then when you look at all of this, and probably the best place to look at it is on the page one forty-six, which is the SACS version of the multi-year projection. And I think the best place to look at is probably, first look at line C. Does everybody see that? It's about three-quarters of the page down. Net increase, decrease, and fund balance.
Line what?
Line C.
Okay.
Yeah. So in any event, what you see is that in the projected year totals, you're showing a net increase in fund balance in oh-seven, oh-eight, but in oh-eight, oh-nine, you're in net, your deficit spent by a million five. And then absent you doing something in that year, then you basically, you get the cumulative effect of the compounding increases on the salary schedule and the big hit in enrollment decline converted to ADA and the loss of the prior year guarantee, and you're, you know, five million, four point five to five million upside down. Now remember, anything you do in oh-eight, oh-nine to close that gap will basically roll over and help you in the following year. It'll reduce that amount of deficit. I mean, there are other things that could change too, and they could change for the better, or they could change for the worse. Your enrollment decline as projected might not materialize. That's one thing. You could decide not to give a salary increase in nine-ten. That's something that could happen. You could come back and recalibrate, enforce your cap on health and welfare, and maybe you could take that eight percent, but as I said, that only amounts to five hundred thousand dollars off the table. But here are the things that could go against you. We got a COLA on all those years. Next month, we'll know, we'll know what the opening salvo is in the governor's budget. That COLA, just to give you an idea, I ran the numbers, three million bucks if the COLA was completely stripped off. I don't think that's what'll happen, but what you might see is a deficit in COLA. So that's why there's got to be vigilance in terms of monitoring the budget and monitoring those assumptions and constantly coming back and basically retooling, recalibrating, and monitoring, because the monitoring process is what's going to save you. Now, I know it's an ugly picture in the second subsequent year, but it is the second subsequent year, and you've got an early warning system here. So that's part of the purpose of doing interim reports, and that's why you have this two, the first and second subsequent year is basically to head off or preempt some of these things from happening. So those are kind of the thoughts and analysis that went into it. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, and, uh, I'm giving my best shot.
Thank you. Questions? Anyone like to go first?
I'd, I'd like to simply say what a pleasure it is to read this. I can actually understand. Well, I, I beg your pardon. It was a pleasure, it was a pleasure to read pages one through thirty, one through thirty-two. Pages thirty-three through, uh, one forty, uh, or thereabouts. It was not so much fun.
You mean the state prescribed format?
But it really, I, having the text, uh, to accompany the numbers is extremely helpful.
One of the things I would suggest is in your secondary narrative, one of the things that I've found helpful with boards is that you should have, carry that variance theme out, because then you, what you should look at is, you know, at second interim, and you can either do it longitudinally from adopted to first to second, or whatever the boards desire, but that's very helpful because then, then it's, you know, not shrouded in so much mystery. You can see, hey, that, that was significant, and, you know, that's why it happened, and, you know, otherwise, because there's so many numbers, and the fact that the state's prescribed format is a super summary. It, it doesn't give you anything in detail. I mean, you can pull things off the financial system in detail. I mean, I mean, the SACS account code string's twenty-four digit long, and, you know, it's relational. You can pull all kinds of stuff out, but, you know, what you guys see at this level, it needs to have a narrative to go along with it to explain what happened.
Eric, what's your preference? Do we show that variance from report to report or from some starting point?
Well, I mean, here's the things that would be critical is you might as well just do it from adopted to first interim to second interim to unadopted actuals, because one of the things it'll show you is that, remember, you're, at the point of first and second interim, you're basically reapproving a budget, right? With the transfers and adjustments. And then, so at second interim, now you got a working budget. You can say, well, what happened that was different that made us like change our minds about these things and decide that this was a good idea to increase, decrease, whatever? But then when you get to year end, then you look at, hey, how did we end in year end versus the second interim report? Because the second interim report was, we should've tinkered enough to basically come in fairly close. You know, our variances should be fairly close. And when I look back at last year, your variance on the unrestricted side was pretty close. Where your problem was is all kinds of things weren't contemplated in your oh-seven, eight budget. So what happened was, on paper, it looked like you had a lot more than you had, and then you got into the current year and said, oh, we got to restore this, you know? I mean, look at that, two million dollars in employee benefits, not budgeted. That, that, that can't happen.
It does.
Because that can't happen because then you think you, as a governing board, you think you have two million dollars of discretion there.
Can I ask a sub, a ba, really a fundamental kind of logical question, uh, because I've not heard it put just the way you did. So we adopt a budget and, and effectively at the end of, uh, of the fiscal year or the beginning of the new year, okay? Then in, uh, at the first interim in October, or no, what, December?
This, you're adopting, you're, you're approving your first interim as of the transactions up to October thirty-first.
Uh, and you use the language that basically it's a new budget.
Yeah, you're doing budget revisions, because basically...
What, what is the significance of having a budget here and not, and then not changing it until you get to here? Does that budget, is it binding in some way?
No, because here's the issue. The budget, because you're dealing with so many variables and so many variables that are beyond your control because you're dealing with state and federal entitlements that may or may not materialize, um, collective bargaining has a lot of times not been concluded, so on the expenditure side. So let me give you an example. If you adopted a budget July one and all these transactions occurred, and you didn't make any adjustments, and then you looked at your adopted budget in July one and looked at your year end, it's likely your variances are going to be through the roof because you didn't make any modifications to contemplate or adjust those things. The budget's a dynamic document. It's, it's constantly changing, but the board needs to be aware of those changes and be on board with those changes. And so then, you know, when you're at second interim, which is January thirty-first to, you know, um, through June thirtieth, you know, then, then you start tightening that, tightening that window, but you still can have things that can come out of nowhere after you have, you know, protracted labor, and then you finally settle. I mean, but all those things should be, you know, be monitored, and, and the board should be kept apprised.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a bunch of questions. First of all, can we talk about restricted?
Yeah.
And you may have some general things that you want to say. I want to start off with a couple of specific questions, and then you can talk more generally about it. One was on page three, looking at the restricted books and supplies, where there is an enormous variance between the budgeted amount and also from the unaudited actuals from last year, and the restricted money for that, for this first interim. So can you talk to that for a moment?
I can talk philosophically, and then I can give you a guess, and then I can give you a comment. How about that?
Sounds great.
Philosophically, you know, I believe that you should try and burn your restricted dollars first, because there's always a premium on unrestricted dollars. So that's a management issue, a budget management issue. And, you know, some things need to be done in that regard. Relative certain restricted categories, like instructional materials, there's usually a plan to accumulate those dollars because of textbook adoptions that might take two, three, four years' worth of apportements to accumulate to do an adoption, because you don't get enough in one year. That's really the exception in my mind, you know? And then, part of the issue with restricted dollars, you're seeing it in books and supplies, but my guess, and this is just my guess from fifteen years of experience as being a CBO, you're getting those dollars in there, and they're being placeholder in the four thousands, and then spread later, once, you know, the budget is, you know, devised or programmed or whatever. So you might have a large sum of money that's basically parked in the four thousands, so it spikes the four thousand category. And then, once the plan is to develop, it might be sprinkled across the ones, twos, threes, fours, fives, sixes. You know? And you see that, sometimes you see it in the five thousands in the districts, and sometimes you see it in the four thousands, but, you know, the concept is a placeholder concept. And anecdotally, I believe that's probably happening here, although I don't have any empirical evidence to support that. That just comes from years of experience.
But how does a board address that if, I mean, who's making the decision to placeholder there? And if we, if we don't know if it's appropriate for that to be parked there, it's hard for us to know if it's-
Well, you ask those kind of questions.
Yeah, okay. Another question I had was on-
Oh, and incidentally, one of the assumptions here, I mean, we budgeted, like, all the restricted dollars are going to be spent. You don't have a history of that, although I'm trying to send a signal that that's what you should do. So, second interim, you might say, well, Eric, that wasn't a reasonable assumption by Eric. We're only going to spend fifty percent, but I think you guys should, to the extent possible, try and spend down your restricted dollars. Because the idea is, is that you want to align those with your programs and basically achieve program objectives, but you shouldn't be spending unrestricted dollars on those same programs if you can spend restricted dollars first.
Right. Well, and that, my next question is on the special ed encroachment on page thirteen, where it talks about the sixteen million that's projected for an encroachment, that includes encroachment, I should say.
Right.
When you look at it, when, on page three and four, when it's talking about the budgeted amounts for special education, essentially, when you add it together, it's already in there, and restricted and unrestricted is about sixteen million dollars. And, or, sorry, in restricted is sixteen million dollars. So as a board, we don't know what, you know, where did the transfer, you know, why did the transfer happen? Why was it that specific amount, et cetera, et cetera? And so again, it's, it feels like we don't have enough information.
Well, one of the things, and I'm not sure, it's not here, but you can show eighty-eight eighty, eighty-eight ninety, is the contributions from an unrestricted program or resource to a restricted program or resource in the general fund. And that could be broken out at every interim report period, just like the inter-fund transfers to other funds from the unrestricted general fund. I mean, I can walk you through those here, the contributions within the general fund. I'm not sure if we have that detail here. But both of those things, you know, should be broken out, and basically, you know, now that I know this is a priority. So you can see what the contributions are, because one of the issues with special ed is that the fact that you're declining will help you in the sense that your maintenance of effort requirement can be reduced relative to your declining enrollment. But if you were stagnant or growing, anytime your encroachment increases, you've got to maintain that level of spending, you know, at special ed. So in any event, I think one of the things that I'd be asking for is just, you know, a breakout of the contributions to restricted programs, you know, at the interim report periods. And that's how we would address that. And then you would see both within the general fund, and if you're making a contribution to another fund, because, you know, if one of your other funds gets in trouble, child development or whatever, and you have to start making unrestricted transfers over there, you want to be aware of that.
I also had a question on page six, when you're talking about the MA money.
Yes.
That's unrestricted, so we just see it as part of the unrestricted total, but do we know how much MA money is sitting in the district accounts right now?
Um, let's see. I can tell you what we budget in the subsidiary, in the budget, but I don't have a breakout of how much is embedded in the ending balance. But that's something we could get you.
Okay.
I don't, do you know that off the top of your head, Shirley?
Is one million forty-three?
Is that all in the ending balance?
Oh, I've got some in the ending balance.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you said one million?
One million forty-three thousand.
One million forty-three thousand.
And my last question, well, actually, no, I've got two more. One is for the ADA. That was just looking at the countywide data. Is that correct? The, for the live births in terms of the elementary?
Just for the elementary. And then, we looked at an enrollment projection, and we used a point nine four percent factor to convert it to ADA.
Okay. Because what you can see is there appears to be over the past ten, well, I guess over the six years of the percentage of births, that it was sort of trending down in general. And I'm wondering if that's because there are more births going on North County than there, and going into those school districts than South County? But I don't know if there's any way that we can know that, and if that trend is continuing or not continuing.
When we come back and look at, we have a couple more years of actual data, and then some projected data countywide, the Department of Finance did. And actually, you see bigger countywide, you know, birth rates over, you know, the next few years. And so that's, you know, the best thing we can do is look at most recent experience being the best predictor of future, and that's why we, you know, rather than using a seven year average, we cut it down to two or three and started looking at, hey, that's probably reasonable. And even doing that, you'll see that the elementary, based mostly on the cohorts that are always in there, already in there and moving along, but also the kindergarten projection, it takes a little uptick, and then it's pretty much stagnant, so.
Well, my last question is, you were talking about the benefits cap, and that we don't enforce it. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Well, that's the three hundred and seventy-five dollars per FDE.
Mm-hmm. Oh, I see, in terms of, we could have just not, if we had held on to that, I see what you're saying.
Exactly.
Okay. Thanks, that's it for me.
If not, I'll answer, I'll ask questions. It's okay?
I have more questions if-
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Dr. Noel.
I'm referring to my colleagues.
I have some, too, but-
I would like to talk about the cafeteria fund and the five hundred thousand dollar loan.
Okay.
And we've talked a little about that.
Sure.
I've been, I was on the board when we made the loan. I've been on the board every year and never been aware of it being paid back. I've read the Arthur's report saying it's not been paid back. I read the county offices report saying it's not been paid back. I requested information about the loan and got a lengthy answer, which doesn't tell me a lot, and maybe just because I'm not reading it correctly, but I think maybe you can tell us.
Well, I'll give it my best shot. I mean, one of the issues with cafeteria funds, and it's not unique to this district, is that at year end, because you're highly dependent on receivables from the state and federal government, and when I say receivable, we operate, I mean, school districts in California on the basis of what's called a modified accrual basis of accounting. We don't operate on cash. We basically recognize revenue and receivables when we have a letter, even though the cash hasn't hit the treasury. And by the same token, we recognize an expense or a liability as soon as we get the bill, rather than when we pay it. And that's different, or that's a distinction between cash accounting and fund accounting. So since we operate on fund accounting, you can look fine on a fund accounting basis, but you don't have any cash in the bank. And in most cases, the county auditor, from county to county, will not allow you to be negative cash at year end. So when you close your books, you can't be negative cash. And I don't have, I don't pretend to have all the command, or command of all the facts here, but I think what happened is that you guys were cash pouring the cafeteria fund. General fund had to loan them cash, because they couldn't be negative cash at year end. And then that hasn't been paid back, or that cash transfer hasn't been repaid. So one of the issues there is that, since cash transfers or due-to, due-froms happen in the nine thousands, which is, if you look at the ending balance, you'll see all these nine thousand objects, they don't happen in what we call the budget or the subsidiary. So it won't have any effect on increasing expense, and so therefore, it won't have any effect on, you know, a greater reserve level. But it is an obligation of the cafeteria fund to pay back the general fund, and it hasn't occurred to my knowledge, pay back the cash.
Well, that's actually a statutory obligation, isn't it?
Yeah. A hundred and twenty days after fiscal year.
So we've been dragging that out since two thousand and five.
You guys have a payment plan, though, don't you?
They, the first-
Hasn't been paid back.
They missed the first payment about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand several years ago, didn't they?
No. There are, there are two kinds of transactions that occur between the general fund and the cafeteria fund at the end of the year. In the year two thousand and four and five, there was, the cafeteria fund cash balance was negative, so there was a due-to, due-from transaction to make them positive at the end, when we closed the books on June thirty. At the same time, the expenses of the cafeteria fund was higher than the revenue that they have received during the year. So revenue minus expense was a negative of seven hundred sixty-five thousand. We also transferred, this transfer of seven hundred sixty-five thousand went through the income statement.
Interfund transfer?
Yeah.
Okay, so that was a seventy-six, nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen?
Right.
Okay.
So, but it was, it was, the analysis showed that of that seven hundred sixty-five thousand, two hundred fifty thousand of that was an error by the auditors in their prior audit. So during several board meetings, it was, it was agreed that the balance that the cafeteria owes the general fund was five hundred fifteen thousand. However-
I remember it differently.
Yeah. However, no receivable or payable was set up between the two books. It was just an interfund transfer, which was the revenue and expense accounts. So following year, there was a payment of the cash transaction, because we immediately do the cleanup of the due-to, due-from.
Right.
But the seven hundred sixty-five thousand, which was reduced to five hundred fifteen thousand, was never paid back, because no receivable or payable was set up between the two books.
Okay, so are you saying, Shirley, just so I understand this, there was an interfund transfer, which was basically five hundred thousand dollars on a fund basis, which would have basically encompassed the cash transfer, and so it's gone?
That's fine. Right.
Okay.
And then, there was an interfund transfer, which was revenue to the cafeteria fund and expense to the general fund.
Right. No, that's what I said right here. What I'm saying is the cash transfer was basically eclipsed by the fact that you did an interfund transfer. So basically, the interfund transfer was the fund transfer, the cash had already moved forward, but since there was no receivables set up, and it was just a due-to, due-from cash mechanism, cash flow mechanism, that interfund transfer wipes the slate clean, is what you're saying.
Right.
Okay.
Right. So that's why-
Let me try, let me try, let me try my memory against your scenario, because my memory, and I believe I'm quoting also from the county offices reconstruction of what happened, was that we made a seven hundred plus thousand dollar contribution to the cafeteria fund in two thousand and four, five.
Right.
And in addition to that, we made a five hundred thousand dollar temporary loan, quote, temporary loan.
Okay, what she's saying is that, remember, cash and fund are separate things, so what she's saying is, on paper, on the budget, an interfund transfer had to be made to make them whole, but additional cash wasn't moved at that point.
No, no. We actually transferred one million two hundred something thousand during that year.
Okay, so there is five hundred thousand outstanding.
Seven hundred thousand plus five hundred thousand.
The five hundred thousand, which was just to make the cash balance positive, was paid back, because that was booked as a due-to, due-from. However, the seven hundred sixty-five thousand, which was actually now five hundred fifteen-
Right.
Is, was never paid back, because no receivable was set up.
It was a one-time interfund contribution.
Right.
But you're saying the five hundred thousand in the due-to, due-from was paid back?
Was paid back.
And you have the documentation on that?
Yes.
Okay, then that should be the end of that issue, if that's the case.
Yeah, but, but Dr. Noel is-
The bottom line, the bottom line then is what?
The bottom line would be, is if, if Shirley can show me the documentation, the loan was paid back, because the due-to, due-from was reversed.
No, Eric, no.
No?
The loan was never set up as a loan. It was just set up as a contribution during that year.
I-
So there was money that came out of the general fund in the total amount of one million two hundred sixty-five thousand.
I'll find the, I'll find the record of the board meeting, but we voted to make a loan in this, here at this board meeting.
Yeah, right.
A five hundred thousand dollar loan, and, and both the auditors and the county referred to this five hundred thousand dollar loan as a temporary loan, which, I don't remember the code section, but I've read the code section.
Yeah, it's a temporary loan.
Yeah, but it was never recorded as a loan. That's why if the payment is to be made-
What I'm trying to go with this is not to bog us down in this, but I would like to clear this up.
Sure.
And if it means that we, if we take the advice of both the auditors and the county, we will forgive the loan, but, and I gather that you have, that we have no choice anyway.
That's what it sounds, that's what it sounds like, but I need to have a full understanding of what happened first, because I'm confused. Because I don't know the historical, you know, facts here, but I'll do some investigation on it.
And we'll bring it back as a future agenda.
Yes.
And clear it all up.
Clear the slate.
Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't want to take that much time on that, because I had another question.
Was there another? Yeah.
Yes.
You've only reported on Fund sixty-seven, and in various documents, I've seen reference to Fund sixty-eight and Fund sixty-nine. And if I understand correctly, within, embedded within that, Fund sixty-seven, there are, there is a self-insurance fund for the elementary district of liability insurance, and there's a similar fund for the high school district, and there's a workers' comp fund. I believe that's sixty-eight. And, and here's where I get confused, because we, I don't know what, what's supposed to be in that workers' comp fund. We used to be self-insured for workers' comp. We then went with Fremont?
Well, I think I, I think I-
We did a lost portfolio transfer deal.
You sold the tail.
Huh?
You sold the tail. That's what you, you sold the tail on your outstanding claims. So I think what happened here was, you were self-insured, fully self-insured.
Sold the tail?
That's what it's called. So basically, basically what happened is you were fully self-insured, as opposed to being self-insured as part of a joint powers authority. At some point in time, you did a lost portfolio transfer, which is basically selling the tail is this. If you closed your books today, or you closed all your doors, you'd still have claims out there. Okay, they're called incurred but not reported, and that's the tail. So if you closed shop today, you'd have claims that would trickle in over the next five, ten, fifteen years, basically through, I'm going to reserve judgment, through some mechanism, you sold the tail, okay? And then I guess there was an issue with whether selling the tail was legal, and several other districts were involved in that.
Well, the company we sold the two went under.
Yeah, well, so in any event-
And then, and then the, they came back to us.
Okay, because you were supposed to be able to walk away from the tail, okay? And then the liability came back to you, but my understanding, only a portion of the liability, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is what I'm-
Now, now, exactly, now, we've, we've had- We've, we've had 270,000. We've had now 150. Do I hear 800,000? Yes, because Craig Price sat over there and told us, he talked to the horse's mouth just that day, and it was 850,000.
Well, he, he was, actually, I saw a communication from his office, and basically, they were discounting the fact that a portion of that would be covered by the excess insurance carrier. So, it's about to 150,000. So, you got 150,000.
Craig was talking about the 150,000. I, I know that Ed flopped down a piece of paper that showed 800,000. Craig commented on it, but Craig was talking about holding 150,000 dollars in that account.
I would say no more than 200, probably 150, based on what I saw the other day.
I would sure like to see a full reporting of that.
Okay, and then, well, let me, let me continue, because the story's not over yet, yeah, so...
You're going to tell us where the head went.
No, I'm going to tell you. Then you move to SISC 1. And SISC 1, you're in a fully funded, self-insured joint powers authority. And I used to be a former board member there, so I know a lot about SISC. So, in any event, and they basically have warranted that they're fully funded, and they can cover the IBNR of all their districts in the JPA. So, you're in a good financial position. Prospectively, you still have this residual tail issue.
And do we pay a premium to them?
Yes, you pay them on an annual basis. So, what you're seeing here...
So, you don't need to keep a reserve for that?
Because they reserve in the premium. So, when they charge you a...
For the remnants of the tail.
That's right. So, when you're charged your premium on an annual basis, they're actuarially determining enough to cover your incurred but not reported. And everybody pays a proportional share based on experience and revenue. So, what you have here is you have the premiums to your property and liability insurance JPA, which is Southern California relief. Then you're paying your workers' comp premium to SISC 1, and some other various and sundry things that, you know, we'll probably bring back. And I'll have some recommendations about maybe how you can save some money. And so, that's where you are.
Well, that, that is extremely helpful. The last question is about, I believe, isn't it in 2009 that we're supposed to finally start putting money away for the GASP?
For GASP 43 and 45?
Yes.
Actually, you're required to basically do an actuary to disclose your liability, but there's no requirement to fully fund.
Is it prudent that we start?
It's prudent, but, I mean, there's a lot of districts that are wrestling with that. I mean, you know, I mean, you should be thankful you're not Fresno or LA Unified and have lifetime benefits and have, you know, anywhere from a $4 billion to $60 billion liability out there.
Ours was estimated at, what, 18 million?
Yeah, that, that, that probably, that doesn't surprise me. So, so in any event, yeah, it's prudent, but, you know, it's competing, you know, interest over scarce resources like any budgeting question, so... I mean, there's a lot of other needs, too.
Uh, thank you very much.
Anyone else questions? Um, I just have a couple, if that's okay. On page four, there's a couple of items that are negative that, and I'm, I'm assuming they just haven't come in, that the money hasn't come in yet. discretionary block grant district, the art, music, and physical ed supplies. What would account for them being, so, such big numbers there? These...
Oh, were they budgeted and not received?
Yes.
Yeah, it's probably the case.
Okay, so we'll just get it. We'll see it in the second interim.
Did you, did you have some adjustments?
Okay, those three programs were actually funded last year. We received the money last year, but we received them late. So, they should, they, they are part of the carryovers. However, when the, when the budget was adopted, it was included as income coming in in '07, '08. That's why when we did the first interim, we had to take it out because it is actually a carryover, because the money came in towards the end of the year.
So, so is that money sitting in the restricted ending balance?
Right.
Correct, okay.
Right, that's part of the 6.6 million ending balance in the restricted portion.
Yeah, so you'll hear me say subsidiary or budget, and that's the top part. And when you hear me say ending balance, that's things that fell to the ending balance last year, and it can be restricted or unrestricted ending balance. And that's what Shirley's saying, since those were '06, '07 funding that was received, but wasn't, weren't able to spend. But they would show up. You have them budgeted on the expense side, correct? That's right, because we're going to burn down that restricted ending balance. And that's another thing, is why your ending balance, restricted ending balance is probably artificially inflated. I mean, it's big to begin with, but since you got all that restricted money late in the year, and that, that was a typical circumstance with all California school district, because the state didn't apportion a lot of those things that were one-time until, you know, March, April. So, nobody could spend them in time. I think what, you were, we got the discretionary site block grants, and like April, you had to have a plan approved by May 1st or something like that.
Makes sense.
Schools over in June.
Going back to the Cafeteria Fund, there was a transfer, interfund transfer here. It says 160, whatever, 100, well, whatever. A large amount. I'm wondering whether we're pretty, our Cafeteria Fund, I'm just, I guess from your experience, are we in a, in an okay place here? Or are we spending too much? Or is it costing us too much?
Well, I think there's two things. If you look at the narrative, you saw part of the ding there is they lost the contract with the child development. So, they're taking the hit, but it needs to be looked at with a critical eye, and, and we're doing that right now. I mean, I think your Cafeteria Fund probably can perform better based, there's a number of things that go into that. I'm just going to say that. And I'm just going to say that we're looking at it critically, and we'll have some recommendations on how to retool it.
No more super kitchens, or, I mean...
No, I'm really looking at, I'm looking at, you know, labor costs, waste, all those type of things, so... And the other thing, too, is given, you know, your level of free and reduced, your reimbursements should probably be higher. There's a whole bunch of things that probably could be done.
Okay, um, I think I have one more question. On page 11, just management. You said something, an aside, which I didn't quite get. The manager was 5% for the, was that what it was? And then 4% on the bottom one?
I said unrestricted. So, basically, you have some management that's coded to restricted, which would make sense, because you probably have some management that administers solely restricted programs.
Oh, okay, okay.
I mean, special ed would be one, right there. And that's a big player to begin with.
So, the 1% difference is coded to restricted?
Okay, and it seems as though that's a low, 4%, 4% and 5% seem low. Is that, am I right?
It's good.
It's good, okay, good. Well, we have on Thursday as well.
Of Thursday.
To talk more, so...
And then you'll have to make the certification, and, you know, I mean, that'll be difficult, because in my mind, you guys are in a qualified status, because you can't make that second subsequent year.
Talk about that a little bit, will you? Because, uh, that's sort of the elephant in the room here.
Yeah, it is, it is. I mean, I think you're in a qualified status, and you'll have to certify qualified, because the danger in not doing it is the county can change the certification, and then it makes you look like you don't know what you're doing. I mean, that's the first thing. The second thing I would say is that, one is, I think you should critically examine the assumptions and tinker with them, and think about, because when you get to second interim, I mean, because you don't know what the county office's response is going to be the first interim, you can see, well, Eric was too aggressive, or not aggressive enough, or whatever the case may be, and you might be able to improve your picture. A big wild card is your enrollment. Does it decrease to the level we think it's going to decrease? And then what happens with the state's budget? If the state's budget basically is how I projected it relative to the DART board, okay. Maybe some of these other things swing in your way, but you're probably going to have to start thinking about whatever you can do to reduce that disparity, disparity between expenditures and revenue in '08, '09. Remember, multi-years are cumulative, right? So, if you have a 1.5 million deficit, you do nothing about it, it becomes 3 million in the subsequent year. So, whatever you can close then helps you in the subsequent year, and it means you have to cut less. So, the qualified certification, the negative implications are, one is that, you know, if you want to issue a trans, the county office is going to basically, let's assume, I'm assuming that you stay qualified through second interim, and maybe, you know, they give you conditional budget approval or something. But then again, maybe they say, we want a plan. You guys put together a plan. In their minds, it's fine, and everything's peachy keen as long as you follow the plan. But let's say you did nothing, and, you know, you stayed in a qualified certification in perpetuity, then they could basically preempt you from issuing a trans. It could hurt your credit rating in terms of issuing GO bonds. So, you want to get out in front of it and do things, be proactive. But like I said, you got to look at the assumptions. But here's the issue. The issue is, is even if my assumptions are way off that, that's a huge number. So, 1 million in the second subsequent year upside down still makes you qualify. So does 1.5, so does 4, so it is 4.5. I mean, whatever the case may be. So, that's the issue. I mean, it's, there's really no degree, degree of qualified certific, you either are or not. And in this particular case, because you can't meet it in the second subsequent year, and it's significant in terms of order and magnitude, it's qualified.
What, so, tell us about Berkeley.
What do you want to know about it?
Well, was that, are we on that same scenario? Or is that past?
No, I, I mean...
I mean, they, they got to a point where they, I mean, I realize the numbers were huge.
Yeah, well, I mean, let me put it this way. I cut 8.5 million dollars out of a $100 million budget in a year.
That'd hurt.
Yeah, I mean, it almost destroyed me. But, you know, I did it.
But, but...
But you guys have a bigger budget, and you're looking at 4 million or so. So, in any event, the issue with, with Berkeley when I first got there is that almost every system in the entire district was broken. So, basically, things that you would think of as industry standards that would exist in any other district just simply didn't exist. And you asked them, you'd ask people in the business office, "Well, why do you do this?" And they say, "Oh, it's the Berkeley way." And so, things as simple as matching, you know, an invoice with a purchase order to pay it, things like that weren't happening. Yeah, I mean, it was unbelievable, you know? Lack of training, lack of skill set, a whole bunch of things, you know? But one of the things that Berkeley had that allowed them to recover was basically a unified, believe it or not, fiscally conservative board, even though some of them were Greens.
But, but I, my question really had to do with, if you, if you were not certified, if you were qualified certification, how far are you from, at some point, having intervention?
Well, there's, intervention, okay. And remember, Berkeley was negative for a couple of years before they restored. Here's the issue. If you do nothing, then the county office can exercise an array of options, and they're contained in Ed Code Section 42127.6. Okay? Those are, and they can do this at any time. They don't have to do it at first or second interim. They can do it, they can deem you a lack of going concern. And basically, they can require any kind of special study. They can hire people to do special studies. They can place a fiscal advisor in here. They can place a fiscal advisor in here with stay and rescind authority, which basically says they can stay or rescind board decisions on anything but collective bargaining-related issues. Okay, that's, that's where we're getting to, the extreme end of it, okay? They could make you write a fiscal recovery plan, which probably, I think they probably won't want to see something like that, which will show, you know, over so many years, how are you going to get everything aligned? Or they can place FICMAT in here as a fiscal advisor, Or they can place FICMAT in here as a fiscal advisor or ask FICMAT to do certain things, okay? That's the first level of intervention. Districts don't get taken over unless they run out of cash in terms of state receivership, when the board becomes advisory. When a district runs out of cash and can no longer meet payroll and requires a state loan, that's when, you know, a state administrator is placed in a district and a district is deemed fiscally insolvent. So there's a continuum there. And it's very rare that you see districts, you know, there's seven or eight in the entire history of modern California school districts that have gone that route. And so the idea is, is the preemptive measures are, if you've got plenty of cash, which at this point you guys have plenty of cash, is to buy the time to align your expenditures with revenue over time. And it might take you, you know, like, like I said, you guys are, you guys aren't upside down until that second subsequent year. You're ahead of it. Most districts are upside down, and then they have to put together a fiscal recovery. So you're almost like in a proactive or preemptive phase. So most districts, it takes them a while to reduce their expenditures and align them with revenue. But as long as they have cash, they're okay. If those lines are crossing and you run out of cash, that's bad. That's, that's real bad. Because then you have no choice. You go to the state, and since the state has an obligation to fully fund K-14 education, they have no choice but to give you a loan. But the legislature hates giving school districts emergency apportements, and there's a whole bunch of bad stuff that happens. So, like I said, it's unlikely that you're going to even see any of the draconian things the county office can do at the first tier, other than probably ask you to put together a plan or, you know, a plan to remedy. That's what I think will happen.
Well, we have another meeting on Thursday, and our time is kind of running out. Are we on Thursday, should we be talking about this plan? Figure out what to do?
I think what you need to do is you need to do the certification and forward it to the county office, get their comments, and then move forward.
I need to forewarn you that Eric is only with us Mondays through Wednesday. So it will be Shirley doing the presentation on Thursday. And I want to make sure that if there are any issues or any questions that they get asked tonight, so that we do have those answers for Thursday.
Sounds like the cafeteria phone. We'll try and do some research on that tomorrow.
Okay.
I'd like to have workers' comp.
Okay.
Part, part of it is I, what I, where I started on that was I was trying to figure out, what, how much are we supposed to have for the part we still owe, for the tail?
I, I can get you some correspondence on the tail, and I also can get you the certification from CISC that you're fully funded relative to the CISC pool.
Because I read that we're supposed to have an actuarial study that tells us how much we keep, aren't we?
Now, remember, when you become part of a workers' comp JPA, that obligation transfers to them. And since they're basically, and you'll see I've got some documentation, it's CISC letterhead.
For the tail?
Well, the tail, the tail's an interesting thing because you're really not operating a self-insured workers' comp program. It's defunct. So, I mean, I mean, that's semantics, I guess. But in any event, probably, you know, like I said, 150 to 200,000 dollars there to run out the tail and deal with those claims. And then CISC has you covered prospectively, and I can demonstrate that to you.
Can I talk about Thursday then? Do we have enough to go through? Do you, you feel like we do have, we'll need some time on Thursday to go ask more questions with Shirley? Is that, everybody okay with that? Because otherwise, we could approve it tonight. We, we don't have to have it on Thursday. We need it on Thursday, okay.
I'm uncomfortable without having Eric here about the certification thing.
Yeah, well, I, I could probably go get you the certification stuff right now, if that would make you more comfortable.
She's showing, Shirley's showing us that she's got some stuff.
Oh, no, it's actually, it's, it's correspondence from CISC. It's not the cer, it's not that.
It's not the actual certification.
I'm prepared to move to approve. I, you know, the, the information from the county will come, and we will act based on that information in the future with regard to our second interim, with regard to our budget planning for the spring. I mean, because what we would be doing anyway is, now that we have this information, making plans to, planned to make budget cuts for the spring in order to bring our finances into alignment with being certified. So I'm happy to put a motion out there to approve the first interim budget report.
Second. Harder and Cudero, is there any other discussion?
I, I can't vote for it. I can't vote on it one way or another, I'm not prepared to vote on it. I, I need to digest this, I need to ask him more questions.
Well, you're in town, you said, tomorrow, right?
Tomorrow.
So we could ask questions. And we do have to get together on Thursday anyways for our closed session. So it might just be that, that this portion, you could get some of your questions answered, and then we'll just vote on Thursday if that works.
And I'm happy to withdraw my motion, but suffice to say that Mr. Smith will not be here on Thursday.
Yes, it makes, yeah.
And we'll essentially be going through the motions on Thursday. You'll have the opportunity to get some additional information tomorrow. But in essence, the window closes with Mr. Smith's time, and we will still be back here on Thursday to approve the interim report. That's fine, I'll withdraw my motion.
I don't even understand your motion. Are you, are you moving that we, that we?
Approve the first, yes, first interim budget report this evening.
With a qualified certification?
We might be getting the qualified certification.
You make the certification.
We make the certification.
And then we, and then we would be. And then we would be offering the county a plan. There's no way to put a plan in motion between now and Thursday. We're going to get the qualified report back no matter what.
Well, I'm not going to vote to have an unqualified one, when in fact, in, as a matter of the advice of our financial consultant, we probably should be voting for a qualified one.
Well, that is the advice. That's what the three-year projection shows. And my understanding is that if you're approving this and, and you're, you're, you're moving to approve it, that it would be as a qualified report.
I'm sorry, what?
That was my understanding as the secondary of the motion.
And what would change that between now and Thursday?
Well, I, then, then may I make an amend, move to amend your motion to include the phrase that we are approving a qualified certification?
I'm fine with that. I mean, I'm not fine with having a qualified certification, but my, my understanding is that that won't change between now and Thursday. And it would be put on as an action item on Thursday.
And we'll have to work on it between now and the spring.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I think the opportunity is, is when the county office will send a response based on their review, and then they'll probably include that they want a plan. Is, you know, that's normally the protocol a county office will follow. Although I will state that AB 1200 is not uniformly applied from county to county, so I don't know the culture.
I just, I, the reason I make the, I move the amendment is because I think we look, after hearing this advice, if we just come in and say, hey, we're, we certified ourselves, unqualified explicitly, we look like, we look like we're trying to, either we don't know what we're doing or we're trying to put something all wrong. And I just don't think we should do that.
Well, I think the understanding was that the qualif, the qualified restriction was, was inherent in the, in the interim report. And so certainly, my understanding in seconding the motion, and I think it was his hardest understanding in making the motion, that it was a qualified certification.
But you don't, why, why would you object to then saying that?
I'm not objecting.
Oh, would you accept that as a seconded?
Well, I think we already said we accepted the amendment. Okay, the question is whether we should just table this for, until Thursday, or just go ahead? And?
Well, we have a motion.
We have a motion, okay.
I proposed amendment on the.
The amendment we're voting. Okay, has, do we hear a second on the amendment, which was really implied in the?
I'll second the amendment.
Thank you. So we have a, can we vote on the amendment, which is Noel Parker? That we, I don't want to repeat it. All those in favor?
That we understand that it's a qualified interim budget report.
Right, thank you.
That, yeah, the, actually, the amendment was that we state that it is on, that is a qualified certification.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, five zero. So now we vote on the motion itself. All those, it was Harder, Cudero. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, none, five zero. Okay. We get a break. Fifteen minutes. Right on time. We're back. We are up to, oops, I've moved things around. Okay, we're up to H2, first reading of the tentative agreement for the proposed calendar between the Santa Barbara School District and SBTA.
And Christine Robertson will make the presentation.
Thank you. As you know, we've been working with Santa Barbara Teachers Association to try to come together with a collaborative calendar for the '08-'09 school year. And after several meetings, our last meeting being on Friday, November 30th, we proposed, counter-proposed, and finally came to a tentative agreement, which I have attached to your agenda items. Prior, we're hoping, not hoping, we know that right now SBTA is doing a vote, and that they will have that vote finished by the end of the week for ratification or not ratification. So we'll know towards the latter part of the week whether we'll be able to move forward with this on a second reading. I do tentatively have this scheduled for Thursday, just in case. So, but to go over briefly what the calendar is, is that the, basically, we've been able to pull a calendar into two proposed calendars. The secondary and elementary schools will have the same start date of August 25th, the same holidays, the same winter break, the same spring break, and the end of school being June 4th, which is typically a week earlier than what we usually have done in the last several years. The year-round calendar for Santa Barbara Community Academy and Cleveland will have a student start date of July 16th, which is a week later than what they have done in the past as well, too. They will have two common three-week intercessions and a three-week winter break, and they will end on June 11th, instead of later like they have in the past. They, there was a slight correction on the year-round calendar because no matter how many times they counted it, they still couldn't come up with 180 days. So they were going to get out on the 10th, now they will be getting out on the 11th. They were one day short, so. But I have attached those, and I'm ready to answer any questions if you have any questions, in hopes to move forward.
Go ahead.
This, the August 25th start date is the day that we would start on anyway. I want us to be really clear on that, because we start the last Monday in August. And I think that one of the things, you know, that sounds early, it just happens that in 2008, that's the earliest that it's ever going to be in August. And so it's hard to be making a change that year when it sounds, it sounds like it's going to be earlier than it would be, but it's not.
It's not.
Okay.
No.
And I just wanted to comment that I've been trying to survey elementary parents through the reps, representatives of the Elementary Parent Advisory Committee. The first go-around, when the proposed calendar was an August 18th start date, opinions on that were all over the map. A lot were negative, but they didn't have any sort of common solution or common proposal. This time around, I'm getting a solid majority that are in favor of this particular calendar. And so it's nice to see, I don't know what that means in terms of teachers, obviously, but it's nice to see that a significant percentage of parents, elementary parents, are in favor of this.
Oh, that's, that's good to hear. I've taken some phone calls as well myself, but, and it's been leaning more towards this calendar in particular, so.
May I just interject? I'm, I'm glad that you've been asking. You know, we put the item on, on our news site, on the website, and didn't get any comments. So I assumed that it was the previous comments, and that was it.
Maybe the public is suffering from calendar fatigue like the board.
We certainly are.
I, I just want to comment on the feedback that I have received up to this point. And that is, people say that they want to be on the same calendar, elementary and secondary. That seems to be the overwhelming feature. And then there are lists of demands after that that don't express any kind of consensus. So I'd be very pleased if we could get on the same calendar at this point, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Our next item is a proposal to constitute a LEAP council in the Santa Barbara High School District, replacing the former Secondary Curriculum Council.
You had asked for further discussion of curriculum council. I wanted Paul Turnbull to have a chance to present what he's been working on to date. And Paul will give this presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. It's nice to be here asking you for consideration of spending a little money, considering we just had an excellent presentation talking about being upside down. The, the issues.
Not upside down yet.
Not upside down yet, no, exactly. The issues involved here, as you know, because you lived it last year with the many cuts, are first and foremost about whether or not the curriculum council can be put in place at the, at the cost that had been ongoing from previous years. And we'll talk about that in a little bit. Taking the cost into account, the reason that it was cut last year, and then what it could potentially be as a, as a compromise perhaps, this is what I would propose to you today. And again, this is simply, I suppose, up for discussion and up for shooting holes in it. Let me know how you feel. The curriculum council, in its history, and we'll put that up there. And I will preface this by saying, this is what I could find or not find as actual evidence in our particular files. So what I did not find was a stated mission for the curriculum council that had been operating years in, in previous. Its purpose was threefold. The adoption and revision of courses of study, the recommendation revision of primary and supplementary texts, whenever you have a textbook adoption. And then finally, the exchange and dissemination of curricular information, primarily through district representatives and district chairs. And there were many chairs represented on the council itself. And so in fact, if we go to the next slide, pardon me, this is from a list that was in fact in the files. It represents essentially 18 voting members. And so if you go from the list, beginning at English, the voting members end at the second column at counseling. And then you'll see that there were also three-site level administrators. There was the assistant superintendent, and then the secretary. So 18 paid, excuse me, paid voting members, ending at counseling. And again, this is, this is out of course, or this is out of the files that we have in the office.
Were these from different schools?
Correct. And these were, and again, these were district department chairs. The, and we'll, we'll talk about funding and, and payment and things like that a little bit later. But essentially, these took the position of district department chairs.
And it, is it also junior high level, or is it?
Correct.
Okay. Another question? Ms. Harder, do you have a question?
It was 18, 18 to counseling was what I was, unless I just didn't count right. Okay, so on the next slide, there were no bylaws that I could find necessarily here. I, there were, there were many, and when I put the requests out, there were many stories and many anecdotes about bylaws, but we, I couldn't get my hands on any bylaws. The meetings occurred every third Wednesday, so they were monthly. The cost, as I had mentioned before, was in terms of $3,500. And now the, the key verb here, or the key word here is active. Active certificated member. And now I know that when the board made the cuts last year, the total amount cut was not $63,000. Am I, and I know that. Okay. And the issue there, I believe, and again, asking about past, is that the number of active members being paid was just simply the issue. So if you simply look at 3,500 hours, it's the equivalent of 100 hours of teacher pay. So now, if we go to the model that I'm proposing, it does have a mission. And its mission is predominantly looking at the original reason that we would look at having not only a LEAP, but having a curricular arm to the LEAP committee that currently exists. And the reason that I'm suggesting this as a LEAP council is that it operates as a, as an adjunct body to something that's entirely about federal mandates. But federal mandates shouldn't necessarily rule how we operate in the classrooms and then interdepartmentally. So our mission, the proposed mission, would be to ensure that all secondary school courses are delivered using standards-aligned strategies in textbooks, meeting the district graduation requirements. We include then CTE pathway requirements, and then of course, meeting the A through G requirements through the, the UC system. And I should have included the CSU system as well. Its purpose, the first three bullets are exactly the same that you saw before. It would have two new purposes. First, to conduct course audits, to ensure the fidelity of the courses that we had talked about before. And a course audit could be something along the lines of what the College Board did recently with the AP courses, simply looking at, at syllabi across subjects, making sure that the delivery is aligned with actually what we're talking about in the textbooks. And then finally, having to do with whether or not we're spending Title II funds for staff development appropriately, that body would conduct a needs assessment of the staff, collect the information, and then we're actually spending money appropriately based on staff need and want. Now, the, the membership, this is kind of a wordy document. Actually, why don't we flip forward if you would, if you would, just go to the next, and I'll explain it in this, in this manner. It's a little bit easier. There would still be a large body of individuals. The difference essentially is that the voting members would be partly in one, one subject area. So for example, you have English and math are the first two, they're very obvious. There's an addition, though. Math intervention is an additional subject area in this, and, and then an additional vote in this scenario, because in the new textbook adoptions, math intervention is actually an entire strand that has to be adopted. We have to start intervent, or intervening. We have to start intervening in a more formal way. And so intervention needs to be included in this particular discussion because it goes beyond Algebra III, IV, TRIG, and, and some of the upper-level classes. You'll see that the fourth bullet down shows a combination of two subjects. So social science and ethnic studies, wherein, whereas in the previous model, they were individuals. And so I'm trying to find a way of having one vote, multiple voices, and still understanding that we're also evolving here. So another example of.
One person representing both of those disciplines?
Yes, sir. And so you'll see, and just so I can point out the examples of where they would be included or multiple departments compressed, you would have the second bullet from the bottom, performing and visual arts. You would have on the second column, PE and health, for example, where they were individuals before. CTE, now, it wasn't labeled CTE in the previous model because now CTE, we're working as a district to make sure that we have defined pathways. You should see in an upcoming board brief, the, the progress we've made in CTE in particular. And then you have the advanced level in that second-to-last bullet, essentially, gate, AP, and IB compressed, one individual. And then avid instead of reach, which was the formal model. So it's important as well to note that we're talking about core. No Child Left Behind recognizes core subjects as more than just the four core subjects. Core subjects are also things that are required for graduation. So that's why we have foreign language, et cetera, as you, as you go back up. Special education, of course, is paramount to, to making sure that we meet our goals. On the next page, you'll see, and this is no slight to counselors or students or librarians, it's non-academic, non-core, meaning it's not an instructional environment in a classroom every single day. So a counselor would retain a vote, a librarian would retain a vote. The new, the new individual on this would be the student representative. And what I would propose is that it would be each of the three comprehensive high schools represented over a three-year period. So Dos Publos High School, one year, San Marcos, Santa Barbara, in succession. The administrative non-voting members would be all administration that you see here, and then a student alternate, including the secretary, who, who essentially organizes the, the entire body. Now, there were voting members, I believe, as administrators in the previous model. And so what I've done is essentially ask that administrators provide information, and we literally ask the teachers to become the voting members. They become the body that drives the entire thing. There would be a set of bylaws. I basically took a set of curriculum council bylaws from Trinity University. There are many universities that have curriculum councils that have excellent bylaws. Trinity happened to be one that was, it seemed to overlay very nicely with ours. And so I've tweaked it, but I didn't bring it here tonight because it's a little, little cart before the horse-ish. The meetings would happen quarterly. They would be two hours in length. And that's where the compromise in salary, or not salary, but stipend comes in. And so if we flip to the next, the fiscal cost then would be $19,750 for all the voting members, which are certificated members. And there was a question raised, well, if I'm a student, what's my, what's my? And there was a question raised, well, if I'm a student, what's my, what's my stipend? And my stipend in the bylaws could easily be written and have been written as, um, community service hours, because it's outside the regular school day, and it would be witnessed by the chair, of course, and et cetera, et cetera. So, um, now, this is all about implications, obviously, and so, money goes first. There's, obviously, I'm expecting a question about the general fund and whether that's an appropriate expenditure. There are some restricted funds. I think that we could apply to this if the board is not, uh, really interested in, in going after the general fund again. But again, that would be an investigation. I'm happy to talk about that. Policies would have to be revised, so the administrative regulation noted here, as well as the LEAP document in particular, that's just rife with references to the curriculum council. That has to be changed as it is anyway. And then you have at the end here, the original question that was brought up by Mr. Houchen, who's in the audience here, I'm glad he's here. Really, this doesn't answer the question about district department chairs district-wide. This is about a, in a curricular arm of a mandated body. This is about making sure that we have something in place that, that will help us make it through textbook adoptions and new courses, et cetera, because that won't stop. That's going to continue on. But, uh, one suggestion has been, uh, interdepartmental PLCs. And we're, we're very happy to entertain that option. I think it's a, it's a next step for the district, because we're in our second year of professional learning communities. And again, a needs assessment would probably identify that as highly important, and then open up Title II funds and others. So, that's essentially what I'm, what I'm proposing, and I am completely open for your questions and comments.
Thank you. I think we'll take public comment, if that's okay with everybody. Go ahead. We have Lain Wheeler.
Good evening, and, uh, thank you, Lain Wheeler, Santa Barbara Teacher Association. I've had, uh, prior conversations with, uh, Mr. Turnbull about this, and I appreciate the collaboration that he's been doing, and I, uh, hope that we're able to continue to work in that regard. One of the structural, um, flaws that I see right now, though, is the concept of having the LEAP council replace the curriculum council. I think that's like, uh, replacing black with white. They're, they're two different entities, and while they need to work in a collaborative and, uh, complimentary fashion, I don't believe one replaces the other. We have some mandates that would require a LEAP council, and I think we have a, a, a public, or a PLC model right now that is really stressing collaboration. And that's the kind of collaboration that curriculum council builds in. And it also empowers teachers to be mo- uh, on the forefront of any of those curricular changes, textbook adoptions and the like. I, I would like to go back and see a, a closer reckoning of the actual dollars. I, you know, people that I've been able to consult with indicated that the actual stipend for curriculum council people was more in the order of twenty-two hundred dollars as opposed to thirty-five. So, I'd like to see a real dollars-to-dollars comparison on that. I think that teacher input on this is really a, a central and necessary piece of this. I'm not sure that that's happened, and yet, it's in a developmental stage, and I, and, um, I've had conversations with, uh, Mr. Tuttle that's going to suggest Turnbull. That's going to suggest that we will be having that, but I do want to make, uh, stress that right now. Curriculum council is a feature in most secondary districts throughout the state. And I, well, we have a unusual, um, style in our district. I, I'm not sure that we should forego that model, when it has been an acceptable and important tool in, in most districts. Once again, the, the, uh, concept of the interdepartmental and that concept of having, uh, parity between schools, I think we, we might lose that in a, a LEAP model as compared to a curriculum council or interdepartmental, uh, meeting. So, I'd like to make sure that that's an important piece of this. Uh, while I think student reps are an important, uh, aspect of this, I think the professionals in this are going to be the educators and the administrative staff, and I would really encourage us to take input from students. But once again, I'm, I'm not sure that, uh, as a, a fully-impannled member, that that, um, operational situation would work. We have student reps that come and speak here, but they're not sitting on the board and actually, uh, voting on items.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Question I would also ask is, will the LEAP council fully address the needs of all areas of the curriculum? I'm not sure that it is at this level capable of doing that. I would like to see that further developed. And I would like to thank you at that point, and ask for full input from teachers, so that we're empowered at the get-go on this and not a top-down decision. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Can, can I ask Mr. Wheeler a question?
Please.
Please.
I just wondered if you could just very briefly explain to me what you see as the major differences between the LEAP council and the curriculum council?
One of the things, I think, is scope. The LEAP council, I, I, I believe, at least per the conversations I had with, uh, Mr. Turnbull, is it has a more limited scope. Now, that scope might, in fact, expand out over a period of years. But as I'm seeing it right now, because of mandates from the state on constitution of the program, it, it's not going to be as encompassing as the curriculum council is now. So, and, you know, that may be an issue that could be addressed, and, and, uh, net full encompassment could be there, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you want to speak? Yeah. I was surprised you. We have, uh, okay. Oh, we have another speaker, but go ahead.
I just, I, I'm, you've met several times with Mr. Turnbull. Are you a sponsor of this? I mean, did, was this a collaborative draft that we're now looking at?
No, he brought this forward. Um, we've had a couple of conversations about it. At, you know, at some point, the idea needs to be floated, and, uh, I think now, my i- idea would be that we would look at, uh, a collaborative effort to try to, to move the, uh, the concept forward in, in a, in a forum that would, uh, honor the curriculum council, as well as, uh, meet the mandates of a LEAP council as per state requirements. So, at this point, I have not been fully collaborative on that, yep.
We have John Houchen.
Hi, I'm John Houchen, teacher at Santa Barbara Junior High. And just to expand a little bit more on your question about, uh, curriculum council versus LEAP, and what gap is left. Essentially, the, the leadership role that interdepartmental chairs played as curriculum council members, yes, they met once a month every third Wednesday, but they met on the first Wednesday with all of the teachers in their departmental areas. They shared very important information at these meetings. They were usually an hour and a half at least. I know that curriculum material, um, collaboration, PLC work. Teachers, uh, share curricular ideas. We moved about the district. We brought each other information from the community about fundraising. This was a very, very important monthly meeting for most departments, most teachers. We're doing without it now. The, the art group, the art teachers did meet once this year, November fourth. We met at Contemporary Arts Forum. Contemporary Arts Forum, I arranged for CAF to give all of the art teachers, um, free memberships for a year. This is an example of community support for education. The art teachers last year created a district-wide secondary art show at the Faulkner Gallery. This is another example of one small department making a difference in the community as a group. If we don't meet, if there's no stipend, no interdepartmental, uh, person, uh, chair, these things won't happen. I know that two play productions of Beauty and the Beast were scheduled at two schools simultaneously, because there were no more interdepartmental meetings of theater arts teachers. So, um, this is, this is an important consideration. And I, I did look on my pay stub. The stipend was, um, closer to two thousand, twenty-one hundred dollars for a year, not thirty-five hundred. So, that's another thing to consider when you're looking at the cost of curriculum council. I'd like to either propose that you have both organizations, or that somehow it incorporates interdepartmental chairs-
Thirty seconds.
-so that the important work can go on of collaborating across the district and communicating. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Houchen. Any comments? Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I feel very torn about this. I mean, the money is probably the overwhelming issue. Are we going to be instituting something in order to, you know, be tinkering or possibly eliminating it in our, our, you know, spring budget discussions? So, that's probably an overwhelming consideration, unfortunately. I have to say that, I guess I've been on the board long enough that we had an active, um, curriculum council when I came onto the board. And that council often made recommendations to the board. That essentially, from my perspective, was how they functioned on behalf of the board. They, uh, vetted material and then made rec- courses, et cetera, made recommendations. And the recommendations were, were not helpful. They were very divided votes. People generally voted along department lines. So, for instance, if the performing arts wanted to implement another elective, very often, other departments would vote in blocks against them, and that's just sort of how things worked out. But, the really valuable function that they performed was the collaboration communication piece. It, I, I think it made a huge difference. And while the recommendations to the board weren't always helpful, the information was being passed, uh, down, you know, and among sites. And I, I just don't know how, uh, we could possibly, you know, find a substitute for that, except through some kind of curriculum council.
Mr. Turnbull, I'm wondering if you can speak to why not department chairs? And, um, why do you feel it's important to add a student rep?
Uh, I would go not necessarily with department chairs, only because department chairs on any particular campus don't represent necessarily the people who are very interested in being active. There are, and often, often case, um, you know, department chairs reflect sort of a rotation of responsibility, and, and a lot of people are trying to be very helpful with each other, and it's a good thing. We, we want to increase, um, leadership and build capacity. That's fine. District-wide, though, uh, what I do see is an actual election. It would be very nice to have, and I still, I don't know how viable this is, and this is something that I would have to work with Mr. Wheeler and other teachers with, and I, I spoke with Mr. Wheeler about this a little bit, uh, earlier. It could be that, um, schools provide their nominees essentially, almost like, you know, a, a political convention. So, you have your nominee, and then, and then with the SBTAs' help, if possible, we would go back out to the, the general population among the schools, and then there would be a vote among the nominees and the representatives. The student representative, I think, is important, because students are the ones that are receiving the, uh, the curriculum that we're providing every single day. And I don't necessarily think that we include student voices as often as we could. We certainly do it anecdotally. A lot of adults, I think, for good measure, talk about how students feel, but we don't have a student in person saying, "I think this is a good idea. I have friends who could possibly do this." We don't have an alternate from another school who could also chime in.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm weighing what you said about department chairs not necessarily being the most active in the district, and I certainly understand that that could be true. But there's some, there's something about the dissemination of information that I think is very useful for department chairs. And at first, I was wondering if you couldn't maybe just, um, follow a model that is, I think, somewhat common in higher ed, but probably in K-12 as well, of just having a department chairs meeting every other week or whatever, uh, every once a month, whatever the, the process was. Because it sounds like some of the things that Mr. Houchen was, uh, discussing didn't strike me as being in the realm of a curriculum committee. Um, sharing information about when productions were taking place. I think of a curriculum committee more as someone who would, as a committee that would examine course outlines, um, approve course, n- new course offerings, et cetera. But, as Ms. Harder pointed out, there's definitely seemed to be a very clear benefit from having that information dissemination, uh, process or format, or whatever we want to call it. So, I'm wondering if there might not be a way of just either including the, the department chairs in the LEAP council, or having a separate entity that's just department chairs for the purpose of sharing information. But I would also, uh, like to speak to the notion of having the student on the council, which I would strongly support, because I think, uh, very often, decisions that affect students are made without any input from the people who are going to be on the receiving end of those decisions. And I think one, one person, one student's voice in this mix is not an overwhelming, uh, number, and it would still be, uh, extremely helpful. I'd also like, um, I think that the notion of having a, an at-large election, I have to tell you, I've always been a proponent of district elections, so. My concern is, I would want, in, in order for the coun- for the LEAP council to have buy-in, I think it would be very important for the schools to feel like they were being equally represented. So, I think although, uh, maybe an at-large election would work, there, there would have to be some guarantee of an equal number of representatives from each school. Otherwise, I think the schools that weren't represented as well would lose, but maybe not, I mean, in an ideal world, they wouldn't. But in reality, I think they might lose, uh, faith in, in the process, or, or interest in, in what was going on.
We only have, we really are kind of over time here, um, and we're not going to resolve this tonight. So, maybe what we should do is just send it back. We've given some ideas, get feedback from teachers, and we'll see it again. Is that, any other last comments?
My last comment would just be, I have to echo what Mrs. Harder said about the general fund. I could not, at this point, support anything going forward in hitting the general fund. So, I, I strongly urge you to look for other funding sources for this.
Thank you.
Okay. Rather than go to H4, since we have a guest here tonight, and even though it says time permitting, if, with your permission here, we could go to H5 and do the report on the Healthy Kids Survey, and we'll, we can always take up H4 at another time. Okay?
About our first meeting in January.
Thursday. Go ahead.
Well, this is a report on Healthy Kids Survey. I think Davis Hayden is going to be leading off. Davis is our Director of Research and Evaluation and Technology.
Yes, please, second. Okay. And, uh-
Hello. Yes, this is a Healthy Kids Survey report from last year, and as was just pointed out, we're actually have already gathered the data for this year. So, uh, if we waited another month or so, we could almost give you this year's data, but, um, I think we'd better go ahead and get this one out of the way. Okay, so, uh, I'll be presenting some background on it, and then Shereen and Pat will present their part of the Healthy Si- Survey, uh, Healthy Kids Survey. And let's see if this works. Ah, it does. Okay, what was the process for 2006 and 2007? I think I might have gone ahead, two slides, no? Just one. Uh, WestEd is the company that, uh, does the, uh, Healthy Kids Survey, uh, has the questions and, um, gives us the data back. We do this in September. We, uh, order the materials and they come in, and we have to copy it. So, we make about four thousand copies of it. And there, Sandy Robinson was the person that led this off last year. She was in charge of it. She had to bundle it for each school, and each testing, and each teacher, and instruction. She had a contact person at each school- She had a contact person at each school. It was an AP. And they were the ones who actually disseminated it and gave it to the teachers. The YSSs were also involved in the process, giving out the surveys to the students. They were administered during November, between November 1st and December 15th. You can see that's the same deadline for right now. So that's what's going on right now. There's also a school climate survey that was completed by the teachers at the same time, or between November 1st and November 30th. And then they were all sent back to WestEd. So that's the process of this survey. It's supposed to be done every two years, is that right? But we do it every year, and so that's why they're collecting data right now. There are strengths and weaknesses to the Healthy Kids Survey, and I wanted to let you know those. The strengths, it's given to a very large sample of students throughout California. And so there's a lot of data, just an enormous amount of data. Questions are vetted by competent professionals. WestEd is a very competent group of people, and they put together some very good questions, although there'll be some weaknesses to that that I'll mention in a second. Since it's done every other year for every school in California, we get some nice trends from it. We can see what's going on in terms of the data. It also allows the districts and schools to spot troubled areas and concerned areas. So this is also a very good thing that we get from the Healthy Kids Survey. The problems, though, we often have low participation rates. Now, if it was just our district having low participation rates, well, maybe the state data would be good. But from my understanding, participation rates go all over the place in schools around the state. We've had very low participation rates in the past. They've gotten better each year. Last year, I think, was the best year we've had. And so finally, the data is starting to have some validity to it from participation. But we got to be careful with the trends analysis, because some of the data from past years just had very low participation rates. Bad or questionable items are hard to change, because once you get into this mode of using an item, you want to be able to follow it year after year. And so there are some items that I consider to be very bad in test construction, and I don't see WestEd changing them. In fact, one item I sent back to WestEd, and I said, "You got to be, you know, really concerned about this item." And they kind of went back, "Well, we'll try and change it next year, but what can we do about it?" So that was sort of the response I got from them. Some of the questions have more of a political value orientation to them. I know of one example where it was a politician who made the final decision on what item to include. So that sometimes happens, because this is a very value-laden instrument. We're talking about drugs. We're talking about alcohol. We're talking about lots of value-laden issues here. And so that's part of a problem with some of the questions, not many of them, but some. And sometimes the questions are not locally relevant. They don't really deal with the problems of Santa Barbara School District. And so that's another issue what we have with it. And finally, this is a slide I've actually given to you, I think, in a board brief. There is a lot of data in this Healthy Kids Survey. So I just pulled one set of data out, because I knew it was of interest to several board members, and that's this one here. I compared the three schools, Dos Pueblos, Santa Barbara High, and San Marcos, across many of the variables about violence and guns and issues of that nature. The NS stands for not significant. And if you look, most of these items are not different between the three schools. All three schools have the same incident rate or the same response rate to these items, such as been offered a soul or given illegal drugs, or been afraid of being beaten up. There's a few cases where there are significant differences, and I use Chi-Square analysis for this. Been in a physical fight at school. And in that case, San Marcos, there's more kids indicating that they've been in a physical fight at school at San Marcos than at the other two schools, with DP having the least number of kids saying that. Then we have to go all the way down to consider yourself a member of a gang. Once again, San Marcos had the most students reporting that they were a member of a gang, with DP having the least. And the final one, how unsafe. I reworded this. I put unsafe, because I wanted it to be in the same way as the rest of the items here. How unsafe do you feel when you're at school? And San Marcos had the most kids saying they felt unsafe at school, significantly different than the other schools. But most of these are non-significant, and that's the type of data you can pull from this. There's lots of other data you can pull from this. But this is my section of the report. Should we take questions at the end or right now?
Can I ask you a quick question right here?
Sure.
It looks startling to see, you know, San Marcos most, Santa Barbara middle, DP least in all of these, but we don't have the data to tell us how, for example, how many students said they felt unsafe.
Yes, I do.
Well, I'm sorry, yes, but I'm saying in this chart.
Do you want to see that?
Why isn't it here?
It is here. I have it on the chart here. I didn't put it into your.
This table.
There's so much data we could put into this. I didn't want to run off hundreds of pages. But I do have some of, I do have the data behind this, if you'd like to see that.
But can I ask a question before?
Sure.
Because I would like, I think would like to see the data. When you're talking about not significant, you just mean that there's not a variance, there's not a significant variance.
There's no difference between the three school and the percent of kids.
So it means that it could be that 10% at every school?
Yes.
You were just looking at here, when you're talking least, middle, most, that means there was a difference in the variance?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay.
Also, also you pick, why do you pick a level of .01?
There's so many, there's.
For your test of significance.
Because when you have multiple, multiple items, you have to increase the level of significance from .05 to something higher. .01 would be a pretty decent level of significance.
And why don't you explain to them what that means?
It means that there's a one, if you had, typical significance would be a 1 in 20 chance that you would not find that distribution as being distinct from another distribution. So it's a probability number here. This is 1 in 100 chance that you would not find that. So it means that the difference between San Marcos and, let's say, San and Barbara, is 1 in 100 for each of these items, the distribution difference. I don't know if we need to go in that deep a technicality here, or?
I'm troubled by, I'm troubled by a number of things. And the first one is, for a lay audience, to talk about things being significant or not significant, when in fact you're talking about a test of significance in statistics, is very confusing. Because most people understand significant in a non-statistical way. So to say that this is non-significant is not illuminating. Secondly, I've looked at these data, and you'll recall last year when I asked questions about it, you told me school data were not available. And I gather you've now gotten school data. I question, I question this invidious comparison between our schools without a much more elaborate understanding, as Mrs. Cordero says, of the actual numbers, of the meaning of these tests of significance. Because this, this is very damning.
Well, let me ask you one thing. I'd never said, I never said that there was no school data, Dr. Noel.
Pardon me?
I never said there was no school data, Dr. Noel. I said there was no student data. I couldn't give you student by student data.
Well, the report that I got from your office only gave district-wide data.
At that time, yes.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, those are my initial reactions.
I think the level of significance is actually quite well-represented by the statistical significance. It's commonly accepted throughout most statisticians.
Can we guess?
It's kept among social scientists and scholars who use statistical tests of significance.
Can we go on and see the other, you said there was the data underlying this?
Oh, which one would you like to see the data for?
For this.
All of them?
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Start with row one, maybe?
Start with row one. Oh.
The highlights in red are where there is differences from the others. And four or more times is the one that, that is highest for San Marcos. But I believe if I went back.
And those are the number?
That was a non-significant altogether. I just highlight it in red because it's greater, but this was a non-significant difference between the three schools.
So the, what does the number?
Number of students who responded that way?
And out of how many students is this?
Well, if you added them all together, 5, 17, 79, 63, and 98, you'd get the total number of students that responded.
So it's a grade level of kids?
Gotcha, okay.
There's a reason why I wasn't going to get too deeply involved in all these data, is that it will take a long time, and there's a lot of data, as I mentioned. And it can just go on and on and on.
Have you given these data to the principals of the school?
The first chart was given to the principals, yes.
These three?
No, I haven't given. As I said, this is an example. To give the data would take an enormous amount of time, and it's a huge data set, Dr. Noel.
How many questions are on this, by the way? About, just?
Pat, do you know?
I mean, is like 100 or is it like?
Yeah, 100.
Over 100.
Okay.
May I suggest that we have two other presenters?
Yes, we do.
And we're going to quickly run out of time.
I have two quick foundational questions. You say that there's not, little time for training of test givers. Students, I take it, just are given the test and given a set of instructions and they proceed?
Yes, that is exactly right.
Okay. I just wonder what kind of information they're given, that if you don't answer accurately, truthfully, faithfully, that it can mislead decision-makers at some point in time. And I'm not sure how you communicate to a student that, that, okay, okay, I got indications that, yes, it's embedded in the instructions, maybe.
It is embedded in the instructions. And I know that they do the best job that they can to ask for that.
Okay. And then my other question is, why do we give it every year and other districts give it every two years? I assume it's a feature of a grant, perhaps? Okay, okay, thank you.
It's paid for?
I'm not sure of the funding source.
No, it's required when you apply for the grant. Okay.
And I know that there's lots of controversial issues in all this data, and we could go on and on and on with multiple questions about it. I just presented a sample to show you what's there.
My understanding, I have a carpool of kids, and I asked them about the survey, and they all said, "Oh, yeah, when we take the survey, we all, the whole class sort of has a group discussion and laughs and carries on about it," which indicates to me that, no, they're not, the teacher is not being, doing it the way it's supposed to be done.
I would hope not, but.
That was just, that, no, that was just, these kids were all, had these little stories about the questions and the jokes the kids were telling and so forth. Anyways, Dr. Noel, did you have a last question here?
Yes, I did.
Quick.
I'm a little confused also, because the next part of this report goes through reporting the data in considerable detail on alcohol and drug use.
Yes, that's what they're going to be presenting, and they're looking at trends also. And the primary purpose.
I have a question.
Okay, well, the primary purpose is more drugs than alcohol, but there are questions about violence and activities of that nature, and.
Well, as you know, I've been concerned about weapons and violence.
That's why I presented this data.
And I just wanted to understand why we don't have any data with respect to these questions that you've, you've compared schools, but you're not giving us any information about how many students answered that they had brought a weapon on campus in the last 12 months? How many students answered that they brought a gun on campus? Been in a physical fight? Carried any other, well, that's a knife or club, pardon me, been threatened or injured with a weapon? Members of gangs? You don't have any numbers here.
I'll provide those numbers to you in the board brief, then if you wish to have them.
But this is a public presentation. Why are you so selective in what you're telling the public? You're telling, we have all kinds of information about, about drinking and about those kinds of things. You allude to these issues dealing with potential or actual violence and intimidation, and you don't provide any data.
Well, I did provide data that was comparing the three schools, because I thought that would be interesting data for the board and for the public to see.
But it's not interesting, how many students answered that they carried a gun on campus? That's not interesting?
I can show that to you. It's time permitting, and it's a lot of data.
I have the report right here. Would you like me to give it?
I've just said I'd give it to you if you want it right now.
Well, actually, what we want to do is have our guests.
I agree with that.
Have our guests speak. And we can come back to this, I think. So go ahead, whoever's next.
Hello, thank you for time to speak with you tonight. I know you've had a long evening already and a lot of work left to do. I'm Pat Ebner, I'm with the RAND Corporation. RAND has been a research partner with the district. We're grateful for that relationship. We've worked as your external evaluator on a couple of different grants. And at the moment, we are paying particular attention because of a grant to reduce alcohol abuse. And that's one of the reasons why I selected some of the substance abuse indicators for tonight, and because we have trended those data over time. And therefore, with all of the limitations that Dr. Hayden's pointed out and that we all understand, I believe that the signal to noise ratio, sort of, there's been lots of problems over time. They continue. Some of them we've, we've made real headway on, because we've improved response rates. For example, we're representing more of each grade than we did in prior years. But we're never going to make this a perfect data set under any stretch. But one of the things we think we can do is look at trends over time for the district, broken down by grade, so that we can begin to see some of the indicators of substance abuse problems, that we can inform both the district and you all and the principals. I've briefed principals before on some of these data under other grants that we've had together. And also, so that we can inform the Fighting Back Council YSS program and its staff about the indicators of substance abuse situations in the district, at the middle school, 7th grade, because the survey, being a state mandate, is done only in the 7th grade in middle school. And then in the 9th and 11th grade in the upper classes. So the 7th grade cohort, if you will, is kind of entering the middle school. So that's where youth sit as they begin their secondary experience. And then the 9th grade and the 11th grade kind of tell us how those youth are aging, what their developmental trajectories are, and how trends change over time for them. So you have, I believe, a handout with some of the data. And in just a few minutes, I didn't mean to step you through each of these tonight, because I understood we had precious little time. This chart merely shows us that we have improved response rates over time. I use percent of enrollment as a way to look at that. Davis has already mentioned that. And if you'll go on, I'll just show them the summary, Davis. Thanks. One of the things we do is, as I said, we are particularly interested in alcohol for a number of reasons. One, we have this grant, but that's not the main reason. Alcohol is the substance most abused by youth, and it has terrifically negative consequences for them in terms of school performance, accidents, injuries, and violence and so on that is associated with use of alcohol among minors. So we pay particular attention to that. And on this chart, I just summarize both some good news and some red flags. And we've used this format, I believe, in talking to the principals in the past and in talking to the Fighting Back Steering Committee. And I thought it would be a way to summarize for you, and you should feel free to ask me any questions. We can go to the data charts, and I can show you grade by grade what seems to be going on. But the story with alcohol is that overall alcohol use appears to be declining in those high school grades, slightly, not in a great rate, but over time slightly. And especially, we see that among males and Hispanic students. There's a term of art called binge drinking in this survey business. And all it really means is that the question asks about having five or more drinks at one time. And I really shouldn't use that term, but the field does that. And so binge drinking rates have also gone down slightly over this long trend period that we look at. And that, again, has, has more impact in some sub-populations than others. And then we see the And then, uh, we see the same thing again for ninth and eleventh graders. Where we see the red flags for alcohol is that the seventh grade cohort, um, prevalence of use has been increasing slightly, and that, in two thousand and six, continued an upward trend that we have begun to see over time. And, again, while drinking five or more drinks at a time is a low prevalence among seventh graders, it has been increasing as well among seventh graders, and especially among females where it used to be quite low. And, let me make one more point about alcohol. Although there've been these overall declines in the prevalence of use, and by prevalence of use, what we measure in this survey is having one drink on one or more days. It may only be one day in the past thirty days, but that counts. It's called past thirty-day use. Today, the feds just announced the national rates, they use the same items, they're standard items. The point that is important is that while prevalence of use has been trending down, some of the high-risk behaviors associated with alcohol use have not in the ninth and eleventh grade. They have shown some increase. And so I think that, like a lot of other situations, some of our interventions, some of the messages get out to the general population of students where we see some changing behavior toward greater safety, and we also have among the student body, as you all well know, other subpopulations where we see quite a bit of risky behavior, and we can't therefore just apply one solution to the whole student body because universal prevention programs that teach kids about risks and about the problems of abuse are fine for most of our youth, most of whom are not using these substances. We think that over time we get maybe some declines in use if these trends hold up, but there are other students, and they need to be meeting with a YSS counselor, or they need to be given an intervention that gets them into some other special school service or into the Daniel Bryant Treatment Center, because we know we have among the student body this entire range of, of problem associated with alcohol. So I think I will stop with that in terms of alcohol because I don't want to take up your time, but let you ask me any questions about the data charts related to alcohol, and I can kind of tell you in a few words that the situation with marijuana use, the other substance that your school-age youths are, are most likely to be abusing, is pretty much the same. That is, we have seen some declines in ninth and eleventh grade prevalence of use in the past thirty days. We see seventh graders coming in with more experience of having already used and reporting it, and we see some of the risk factors, um, increasing that indicate frequency of use, problems associated with use, and so on. So, um, I didn't report out some of the figures related to violence, um, and fights and so on. We paid more attention to that when we were analyzing data a few years ago. When I analyzed those data, I found the rates to be fairly low, and during some of these time periods, the response rates were not great, and I frankly found it difficult to really believe there was signal to noise among some of those behaviors like carrying a gun on a campus or, or violent fighting and so on. So I have not done them. If there is interest in those, those are certainly indicators that we can put forward to you, but with those kinds of very, very low rates, um, I have more, you know, difficulty kind of, kind of detecting what's really going on, and some of those items, because of interest in school violence that has arisen more recently, have not been in this survey for that long a trend period, and so we don't know as much about how to look over time at some of those indicators. But as, as Dr. Hayden pointed out, we have them, they're collecting them again in, in the two thousand and seven survey just being done now, and we can bring some of those back to you and, um, and report them out. Any questions about the, the alcohol or the marijuana charts?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I mean, I think that would be really useful information to have with regard to those other items, those other pieces in the survey, because it is on, in the forefront of everyone's thinking right now in terms of keeping our students safe. But the one comment that I want to make, not, I mean, and, and I appreciate your, uh, feedback, Santa Barbara seems to be trending well ahead of the rest of the reporting in California in terms of, of alcohol and marijuana use. I mean, just chart after chart after chart, the lights going down in California.
Um, I don't find that so surprising. In fact, in, in, in quite a number of situations, they're, they're fairly similar. Um, they really are. Um, I, I don't see that many where they're, where they're very different. Today, some of the national data were just released, and I noted right away that in Santa Barbara, the data for marijuana use among youth reported during the past thirty days has been, um, at the same level or a little bit higher than what the national data show, and with the national data in that particular survey, um, they're looking at eighth, tenth, and twelfth graders. So these kids are actually each a year older than yours, but your data suggests that marijuana use is a little bit higher here. And of course, California has a medical marijuana statute, um, there are other differences in supply. California is a big manufacturer of domestic marijuana. There, there are lots of reasons why California would be ahead of that game. And on alcohol, Santa Barbara looks to have lower prevalence rates and is declining, as I pointed out earlier, um, in the same direction that the national data are going, and your prevalence rates there are lower. So I think there's some of that going on, and, and with the state as a whole, again, I think Santa Barbara County isn't the mainstream California county, and, um, and there are,
We just think so, right?
Yeah, right. Um, there are, there are ups and downs in those trends, and when we, when we bring in the new data, I'm going to extend out the, the state lines for you and show you more of those comparisons.
I have one quick question and one that's probably not so quick. The quick one is just the wording. I just want to make sure I'm understanding the wording. For example, under red flags, the second bullet point.
On alcohol?
Yes, I'm sorry, on alcohol.
Okay, go ahead.
Where it says, binge drinking rates while low increased significantly among seventh graders, especially among females, white, and Hispanic students. Does the white and Hispanic refer to the females?
No.
So-
That's all, that's both male and female in that category.
Okay.
And the female is all female, as opposed to males. So we break down, first of all, we look at the grade as a whole.
Okay, so that would include, for example, uh, African-American students, uh, Pacific Islanders, or-
That's another category that is, that was not found to be, um, trending in a statistically significant direction.
What I mean by when you say that's all females, I'm saying that would include-
Yes, everyone, yes.
All of those, okay.
Yes, all the, all the race, ethnicity breakdowns that are captured are in the female.
Okay.
So it's male versus female.
Okay.
And then it's the breakdown of race, ethnicity, and the grade as a whole.
Okay. And then the other question that's probably not so easy to answer is, you know, one of the questions that we always raise in looking at, especially this survey, because we have such anecdotal evidence that students may or may not be taking it very seriously, um, I'm wondering if, first, if there's been any research, or if there's any research to indicate how accurately students report their behavior? And assuming that there is, um, has that research broken down the various subgroups in terms of how, if there's any difference in the accuracy or truthfulness with which different subgroups would report their behavior? Because I could imagine that in some student subgroups, it might be, uh, there, there might be some positive implications about engaging in certain behaviors.
It's not only students, we find that in general. I am a survey methodologist, so I'm the kind of person who is interested in the, the research on the research data collection issues, and you're right, it's not a simple answer. Um, it's, it's an important question. And, um, and there is some research done on it, both in this and in others, and we know there is bias in the data. I'm the first to admit that. These students will under-report in some situations, and they may be over-reporting in other situations, depending on what kind of dynamic is able to take over in a classroom. So we know there's, there's bias in both directions, and, and I fall back on the notion that they were biased in two thousand and four, they're biased in two thousand and six, they're gonna be biased in two thousand and seven. I don't think kids are changing very much. If the classroom is not a serious environment for doing this survey work, and the kids become somewhat unruly and out of control, they will take off with this like they will other things. The, the, the training, Dr. Hayden is right, you know, we don't spend days training people to do this. However, in your district, we do have people with a lot of experience, your teachers have done this for multiple years, and the YSS staff, some of them, as you know, are veterans, and, and they have administered the survey. I've seen surveys collected in your classrooms where the students are informed that they should take it seriously, that we need their opinions, that important decisions get made from these data, and the classroom is under control, and they're quiet, and they work alone, and they're not allowed to, to carry on, and, and then we feel that, in fact, we get the best shot at an honest answer. Satisfying is a term that we use, and we find there are differences in the population, adult, adolescent, et cetera, under different situations where a culture would feel that is more socially desirable to answer an interviewer in a way that you anticipate the interviewer wants you to answer. And we try to minimize, um, the signal that you might want an answer of one type or another, but kids obviously know, we don't want them, um, abusing alcohol and drugs, so they know what the socially desirable answer is, and if they feel intimidated or a lack of privacy, they may be answering in socially desirable fashions, which can result, um, in under-reporting or over-reporting.
I have one more, I have one more comment. I have one more comment on that, too. Uh, I've actually called WestEd about this. There's two questions on the survey. One asked, did you understand the questions on the survey, and another one asked, did you, well, basically, did you lie when you answered the survey? They will not throw a student's answer out unless they have at least two of those answers or, there's other things, too, um, that they find false or wrong. And, um, I would say, hey, if a student says that they lie on the survey, shouldn't you throw the survey out? I think that would be good enough. And, Pat, you may have a comment on this, but in general, I think that, uh, there are, there are other issues with this WestEd survey that need to be addressed.
Well, my concern would be, one, that students may know the socially acceptable answer, but their soc, their social environment is different from our social environment, and while they may know the socially acceptable answer for what adults would want, um, they may be more inclined to be persuaded by the socially acceptable answer of what their peers would, would expect.
Oh, yes, as I said, I, I, I think they could be biasing their responses in either direction, but over time, I think it, it is a signal that alcohol use among seventh graders, with all of the limitations of the data, over time, we see that seventh graders, by seventh grade, a higher percentage have been reporting that they are using alcohol.
Well, well, that was gonna be my other concern, looking at it over time. Um, I understood Dr. Hayden to say that previous years have had less reliability because of the num, numbers and lack of numbers, and I would assume that with larger numbers, you exacerbate the bias.
No, I, I don't think you do that. You, you correct for some of the problems of representing the population with larger numbers.
But comparing it to previous years where the numbers were-
Well, there's two answers about that. One is that I don't use the data when I feel that there's a year or a grade within a year for which we can't really represent the population. So there are blanks in your charts, and, and that's because we, we don't have good data for those, for those trends, so we do have gaps along the way, you're, you know, that are gonna be there. So, so that is, is definitely a problem that we live with. We don't, we just don't use the data. And, um, what we've been doing, um, over the years since looking back to two thousand is we have been creating adjustments in the estimates based on variation in representation of the grades. So we do what's called weighting of the data to try to correct a little bit for some of the volatility in the, the changing response rate over time. And, and that's why when you look at, at, at RAND's analysis of these data, you'll see some slight differences in rates between those and what the WestEd state report produces. And that's because there are different ways to tackle the data problems, and, and we choose to pay attention to trends because our grants are multi-year, we're reporting multi-year, we want the most stable kind of trend line we can get. I don't look at schools, you know, I don't do school by school by school kind of analysis. That's not what, what we're looking at when we look at these as indicators of, of what we need to know for the community as a whole.
One, I'm sorry, one last question, and that is, we, we know that there's research that indicates that students of color, particularly African-American students, um, are influenced by whether or not they have to identify their ethnicity when they're taking a test. On standardized tests, students who, who identified their ethnicity before they took the test scored lower than students who had not identified their, their ethnicity, and I'm wondering if there's been any research into whether, I assume the fact that we have these broken down by ethnicity means that the students are identifying their ethnicity on this survey. So I'm wondering if there's been any, any research into whether identifying their ethnicity has any influence or effect on how they answer co, survey questions?
I don't know of any research connected to this state survey that's done that, and, and I don't know that research in general, um, so I can't help you with that question, to be quite honest. And here, I'm not so concerned about that particular group because it's a very low percentage. It's not gonna drive these numbers terribly. I can't even break out the data by each race, ethnicity group because I don't have enough of them except in, in combination, which is unfortunate, but that's just the way it is.
But we have a large number of Latino students, and I'm wondering if that trend might appear with Latino students as well.
It, it, I don't know. Sorry.
We're gonna move on to our other, thank you so much. That was interesting. Thank you.
Well, Shereen Catapooch is coming up. I do need to make a comment. I don't want to lose sight of the big picture here, and the big picture is that even if we discount reliability and, and, and give a lot of variance to, uh, to problems in reliability of this data, but we do have a problem in, in drug use, uh, and our problems are primarily in alcohol and marijuana use. The numbers may vary, the numbers may be getting better. At the high school level, some one out of three or one out of four students is reporting that they have used alcohol in the last thirty days. Some one out of five students is reporting using marijuana in the last thirty days. We don't appear to have much cocaine or methamphetamine use, but we have plenty of alcohol and marijuana use, and that's a great concern to us.
What about the, uh, fights, beating up guns, and so on? Do you attribute the same significance to these data as to the drinking and smoking data?
I was just addressing drugs, what, what drugs are big problems.
Well, it's the same survey, I mean, it's same, same survey produces answers to some items and, and others, and we're not, but I'm, what I'm not hearing in this report is any discussion of the latter set of questions and the, any, any of the numbers of that.
I believe Dr. Hayden started with, with weapons.
No, he, he compared schools. He didn't tell us how much.
You can address this, too?
You know, I, I wanted to just take a minute, if it's okay, and address some of the questions that were already raised. In terms of, um, the survey getting sort of valid or reliable data, by and large, most research those, that, though there is some bias in some questions because of social desirability or other effects, we can basically trust what kids are telling us in these not just confidential, but totally anonymous surveys, and having those larger numbers actually washes out, larger numbers of students participating washes out, um, the effects of the outliers. And as, um, Davis was remarking, there are a number of items in the California Healthy Kids Survey that they use to discard surveys. They have a fake drug in there called metabine. They also have a, um, algorithm where they run the data through, and if kids have a pattern of responses like A, B, C, D, A, B, C, D, A, B, C, D, or all, their answers are exactly the same, then they discard the data. So they're sophisticated, um, researchers- So they're sophisticated researchers and data analysts, and they do clean the data some before they give it to us. So I think what we end up with is fairly good. I also wanted to say a word about the California Healthy Kids Training. There are a lot of resource materials that we distribute to administrators, to the onsite coordinators. There's a script, bless you, a script for teachers. So there are a lot of materials to help walk people through how to administer the survey and to standardize the administration on the school sites. The data that's reported out from WestEd generally comes by district. We, your partner, finding back in the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse, we only get like, south coast or district data. We never see anything by school. Where you do have school-level results, that's because you've asked for them, and you've paid extra to get that data set. So those data aren't generally available by school. If you have them now, it's because they were requested and they're available for analysis by Dr. Hayden. Why we do it every year, I think we've largely addressed this, but it's mandated that it's done every two years as a function of Title IV Safe and Drug-Free Schools Principles of Effectiveness. And we do it every year because it's really useful data, and it drives a lot of our programmatic decisions, our staffing. And it's not only useful but necessary for the grants that help support so much of the good work that we do with you and the schools. So, I know we're really over time, so I'm not going to talk a lot about my slides. I did want to point your attention to a nice, brief one-pager that tells you, summarizes for you what YSS, some of what YSS does in the schools. In terms of what we actually have here, I have to apologize, the 1399 is actually an error. We reran the data, we had some coding issues. It's closer to 2,000 students who received individual services during the last school year. So on average, individual services being one-on-one counseling, that sort of one-on-one assistance. And on average, students are being seen three to four times. About 60% of the students that we see are female, and the vast majority are Latino. Our next slide, quickly. The reasons why students are referred to the YSSs are primarily personal issues, behavioral issues because of conflict or anger issues, and then family and grades. The most typically delivered services from YSS to the students are one-on-one assistance, support, and follow-up. Therapeutic counseling, which, we distinguish therapeutic counseling from just one-on-one support. A student might go and talk to a YSS for 10 or 15 minutes about an issue and get some support and assistance and listening and coaching. And that's different than sitting down with someone who has a clinical background. About half this year of our youth service specialists are MFTs. So that's our therapeutic counseling. And then the third largest category is crisis counseling. Who refer the students? The vast majority of students who go seek a YSS do their of their own accord. They walk in and say, help. Then the next largest category is YSS is calling students in because they've already begun to work with them, and they're following up and checking in and seeing how they're doing. And then the third largest referral source is school staff. So that could be teachers, administrators, counselors, and the like. Where are they referred to? Most students are referred to other school-based supports and services. The next largest category is alcohol and other drug counseling, or other kinds of counseling support in the community, whether that's individual or family counseling. I'm going to skip over these and let you read them. The next couple of slides tell you about the other kinds of group services that we deliver. Outreach in terms of prevention education to large classrooms, other kinds of science-based prevention intervention work that we do in large group activities with kids. Finally, we have a slide that talks about the data just from this last spring. This isn't over the last couple of years, it's just in this last spring. When we do our prevention education curricula, like Too Good for Drugs and Violence, or the Life Skills in the Middle School, and Reconnecting Youth at the middle schools and high schools, we deliver a pre-test. So we assess students on their knowledge and attitudes and behaviors before the intervention, and then we do a post-test. So these are the results just from the spring for those three science-based curricula that we implement. I would like to read you two quotes very quickly. May I do that? The first is from a 7th grade student. He said, "I was in 7th grade when I first started drinking. I started out drinking a little, and then it was more and more. One of the reasons was because I was left at home alone a lot. I got used to drinking whenever I could get the chance. Then some bad stuff started happening. One big thing that happened was I got very drunk and did things I don't remember. My godfather saw me like that, and when I found out, I was embarrassed. Now I want something better for my life." Setting drug and alcohol goals in Reconnecting Youth, one of the interventions that we deliver on the campuses, really helps me out with control over my uses. I play basketball, and I know that doing drugs and alcohol isn't going to help me succeed in basketball. My YSS is helping me with my application to high school so I can play basketball there. Now I have goals for the future, like going to UCLA and playing college basketball." And then from a parent who went through our super program, the Intervention for Kids with Alcohol or Other Drug Suspensions. "Before coming to the super program, I was not very happy about the reason why I was coming here, and I thought it would be a total waste of time. I'm now very happy we came to this program and glad this happened early in my son's teen years, as hopefully this program saves him from getting into a lot of trouble in the future. I'm very grateful to live in a community where people and schools and organizations care so much about our kids to provide these programs free of charge. This program has definitely brought my son and I closer together. Staff was very knowledgeable and friendly. Thank you." I wanted to end with those quotes because I think, you know, our data tell us so much and can guide us. But I wanted to just bring the focus back to the kids and the parents that we're serving. And it's really a privilege for us to continue to work with you. We've been doing that for about 14 years now, and we appreciate that opportunity, and we know that it's a privilege, and it's a pleasure for us. So, thank you.
It was actually nice to hear a quote from students to end our meeting this evening. That's a nice way to end. So late, yeah, I was supposed to declare that we're going after 10:30? Is that what just happened?
I had a couple more loose ends on this, if I may. One of the things that, where I'm coming from on this, is I look at, I'm looking at the '04 study. And I look and say, 23% of the 9th graders answered that they had been afraid of being beaten up. Okay? Now, I'm not interested in whether that's a representative sample of the whole population of 9th graders. I count from the response rate that 23% of the 9th graders was 292 students. So I don't care whether it's representative of everybody or not. There are 292 students who said that that was true. Now, maybe there's response error. I called a Mr. Bailey at WestEd, and a senior statistician, if I got the right guy. He said, "Well, we figured around 2% either way." Okay? So I correct for that, and I still get enough kids, absolute number of kids, that it's a concern. For carried any other weapon such as a knife or a club, 12% of the 9th graders. 147 kids. That's a lot of knives and clubs, as far as I'm concerned. Okay? Carried a gun, now we're getting really heavy. Well, it's only 3%, well, no, it's only 5%. 61 instances of a kid saying in the last 12 months, "I carried a gun on campus." Half of them liars. Maybe only 30 kids brought guns on campus. That's too damn many guns on campus. So I say these are relevant data, and I take the district to task for not putting some energy into bringing these data to the public. If the survey methodology is good enough for talking about drinking and smoking dope, then it's damn well good enough to talk about these concerns about the physical security and the psychological security of these kids on our campus. And that's an important issue for this community, even though it doesn't seem to be an important issue for this administration.
I beg your pardon, that's not an important issue for us? We've been talking about gang violence, we've been talking about keeping students safe for months and months.
Time for action, Dr. Marcus. Long past. Marcus Chief.
We have a speaker.
Lane Wheeler.
Thank you again. I'll try to be quick. I am a parent speaking. And while this page of the survey, I think, was an effort to simplify data, I'm not sure that it's the most representative, and I think it can be damning against particular schools. I think while we're presenting data, especially pieces that are going to be picked up by the public, it's important to give them a more accurate picture rather than a least-most and someplace in between. Simply, number of significant responses over total number of responses, and whether or not that equals a significant response, I think, might have been a much more productive way of analyzing this data or presenting this data. Unfortunately, Sam Marcus, where my kids go, looks like a place that you wouldn't want your kids to go. And I think it's a wonderful school, and I've been to all of our high schools and junior highs. And I think we're making superior efforts in all those schools to eradicate and change behavior and make it a more productive place. I just am always concerned when data goes out and it becomes a soundbite in some news report. So I would encourage us to be as proactive in our reporting and honest as we can, but also to present it in a way that really demonstrates clearly what the numbers mean rather than a word like "most." Thank you.
Thank you. It's late. I think we can go on to, thank you, we can go on to coming events. We're going to pick up H4, another point, coming events. In terms of the, is that where we would talk about this board meeting that's on Thursday? We still have-
No, that's K, future agenda items.
Oh, okay. Okay. Any other coming events? I don't think so. Any board comments? No? Can I charge for a second? So then we have future agenda items.
Right.
So on Thursday, if we have, we still have some closed session items to work on. So if we could have a closed session item, a meeting from 4:30 to 6:00, does that work for everybody? We were scheduled-
Do we also not potentially have an action item with regard to the contract?
No, we don't. The union ratification won't be finished until the end of this week. So we would bring it back first week, meet first week in January.
We have a closed session agenda items.
It would be to complete the superintendent's evaluation process? And then I don't know what else might be there.
And meet with legal counsel.
Okay. Oh, yeah, it's in, okay.
Okay, does that timing work again?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the time again?
4:30 to 6:30.
Yes?
6:30? I can't stay that long, but-
Oh, 4:30 to 6:00.
4:30 to 6:00, excuse me. 4:30 to 6:00.
Okay.
End the meeting.